The September or the October 7th meeting, regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. Excuse me. And Sheri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Swift.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis, hopefully will be joining soon.
Not here yet. Okay. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have, there's the flag. I can't remember who did this last time. I'd have to look at the minutes.
Steve, I did.
You did. Okay. Well, John, why don't you lead us, lead the commission in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Got it. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And this republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God. Individually with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, Michael Anaba is here too. Okay. All right. Now we've reached an uncomfortable point. Because the next item on the agenda is election of a new chairperson and vice chairperson. And we held off till now so that we would have all five commissioners in place to do the voting. And we don't. Sheri, could you maybe try giving Commissioner Lottis a call?
Sure.
Thank you. And we'll wait for results of that effort.
Steve, I do, I have a question regarding this, and I don't know if it's better for me to just wait till Commissioner Lottis joins us, or if I should do it now? Or does it matter? I could repeat it.
Repetition won't hurt. What's the question?
Okay, so the question I have is, basically on the agenda, you know, it says that the position will be for a 12-month period. Does that mean 12 months from tonight's date? Or the 12-month period that aligns with our terms, which would be, you know, into May?
Into the end of May.
We've got no normal voting time.
Yeah. What, what's your, what's the verdict on that, Nikhil?
So it's a 12 months because you, the, the new commissioner, I believe because the new commission chair will take office today. And technically, there's supposed to be a reassignment on the dais. I don't, would, which is not, which we can't do anymore. But it'll be from the 12 months from today.
So we're not, so, and the reason I just brought that up was in the past, our terms used to go from January to December, whereas the normal, like the fiscal cycle, et cetera, went, you know, started in June. Or first of July till through June. And then I know a couple, I think it was a couple of years ago, we switched our voting, I believe, to be in May. Correct? And then we do the 12-year cycles. Are we getting off of that cycle?
It sounds like we're getting off that cycle. The, the, the rule that I understand at the moment is that the, the terms of each commissioner, whatever year they end in, they end at the second city council meeting of May.
Right.
Basically, the, the, the term of the chair or vice chair would be the same. We just waited, in this case, four and a half months till we had a full slate of commissioners.
Right. So I guess, thank you, Stephen. That's basically my question. Are we going to follow that cycle as we had? So in other words, tonight, if we voted, the, you know, the, the term, the president, the vice president, or a chair rather than vice chair, term would be shorter than normal, just due to circumstances, but we'd stay on that pattern or that cycle?
That, that's correct. So
Okay.
Code, the code 10-102 says that the term expires the first regular council meeting in May.
Okay.
Yeah, first meeting, not second.
All right.
Okay.
So we will follow that cycle then. And then we'll vote again once for the next, at that time.
Or in April, probably, yeah.
So we, Commissioner Lottis is here. So do we have any nominations for chair?
Um, I'll nominate Steve Quilisi.
Any other nominations?
I was gonna say, I'll second it, Steve, if you're opening to finish the cycle.
There's no second on a nomination, but you can have another nomination.
Right.
You can nominate another person.
I'm assuming, so I'm assuming that this is the cycle that goes through May of 2021. Correct. Okay.
Correct.
And, and I just want to add one comment. I'm, Steve, you're doing a fantastic job. And I'm very happy to have you continue, and you have expressed interest in continuing. I just think that on our next round, that it really would be a good idea to rotate the chairmanship. And, and that traditionally, I think the vice chair advances to the chair. And I just think that that's a good idea to develop leadership skills on, among the people on the commission. And that, that contributes to the, the community in a positive way. So, um,
Well, there's no reason not to.
I'm very happy with what you're doing, so.
Well, I appreciate the kind words, but there's, there's no reason to not change if that's the pleasure of the commission.
So do we have a motion to, to have Chair Quilisi be, continue to be the chair? A motion?
Yes, I, I, that's what I moved.
You, you nominated him, and now we're making a motion?
I'm nomin, oh, wait.
And who's seconded, who's seconding the motion?
I'll second the.
Nolan, okay, we'll have a roll call now. Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Swift?
Yes.
Well, thank you all.
Now, we don't have to change seats at the dais, so we'll move forward to vice chair. Do we have any nominations? Not a motion, but a nomination for a vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Nolan. I think she's doing a fine job. There have been a couple of times when I couldn't make the meeting, and she ran it very professionally.
Is there anyone that has a nomination of anyone else? Not a second, but a sep, a different person. Okay, nominations are closed. I'll take a motion for Vice Chair Nolan.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Who's moving? Quilisi? And Lottis is second. Roll call chair, Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
I'll vote for myself.
Yep. And Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
And Swift?
Yes.
Okay, everyone stays the same. Thank you.
Okay.
Next up is, oh, reassignment of seating, right. Public communications, okay. This is the time set aside during the planning commission meeting for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of city, city business other than scheduled agenda items, of which we have at least two tonight, two public hearings. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and may include questions and answers, but will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than under emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Lucas and Sheri, do we have any communications written or, or verbal from the plup, from the public for public communications?
None received.
None, no emails and no attendees on the Zoom meeting.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent items. We have two consent items, the minutes of the regular meeting of September 16th and the minutes of the special meeting of September 30th. And those are items two and three in your packet. I presume all the commissioners have looked at them. Are there any corrections, changes, adds that you see in either set of minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the two consent items.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes, the regular meeting of the planning commission, September 16th, 2020. And also the minutes of the special meeting of the planning commission, September 30th, 2020.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Very good, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Sheri, could we have a roll call, please?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Swift?
Yes.
Terrific. The next item is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. As, as we all know, including the two commissioners now, it's kind of expected that when we have a case come before us that has an actual physical location within the city, it is expected that you will have taken a look at the site and familiarized yourself with the case. And this is the time to note whether you had any discussions with any third party about it. There's nothing illegal about doing that. It's just that you have to disclose ex parte contacts for full disclosure to the public. So let's start with Vice Chair Nolan.
All right. I will be accusing myself of this item this evening, and I need to ask, or need to get direction from staff. I will need to take off my planning commissioner hat and put on my landscape architect hat and represent my client. So please advise what I need to do to legally do this process. Thank you.
Nikhil?
So just to be clear, your, the recusal is to the general plan and housing element update presentation?
I'm sorry. I should have said what item it was for. It is, let me flip my page.
I think you're recusing from item five.
It's item five, but because we were talking about expert contact, our business and contacts. Maybe I should have said that later, but I guess that'll give you a chance to tell me or figure out what to do.
Well, it, it'll be a full recusal from that, and then if you're representing your client in this, in front of the commission, you won't be taking part in the discussion. You'll be voting. You would be strictly as a member of the public.
Yeah. Do I need to, I guess my question was, because I normally, that is what I would do if we were, you know, meeting physically. But do I need to log out or log in, or just verbally say, here's what I'm doing? I, that's.
So we have a capability here to just put you on hold, is what it's called for the Zoom meeting. And then if you want to speak, once they turn the time over to the, to Mr. Otway. And if you were going to speak, then we'll take you off hold for that.
Okay. So basically, I don't need to do anything. You'll manage putting me on hold?
That's right.
Yes. Once, once the item comes around, because you can't take part in the discussion as a commissioner, so it's a little bit weird in the Zoom kind of context, because
Yeah.
Um, and so I'd just be mindful of that once it comes around. Yeah, it's, yeah.
All right. Anyway, so, sorry for all the time, but I wanted to make sure it was done correctly.
I'm glad we got that settled, because when it's a live meeting in the council chambers,
Yeah.
we have been told in the past that you need to leave the room, which seems a little unfortunate, because it makes it look like you're giving up your rights as a member of the public to speak on the item.
Yeah, I've had to do both, leave the room.
You don't have to do that. Just, you'll just listen quietly rather than engage in the discussion.
I won't say anything.
I think, Sheri, if I'm not mistaken, is there a way we can put,
I got it.
Isn't there like a breakout room or something? I've seen this done in a, I've seen this done in different ways, but normally, there's, you know, like physically leaving the,
Nikhil, I have two options.
Without actually being in the, or I may have mistaken, that might be a question for James.
Nikhil, this is James.
Yeah.
I, if I put her on hold, she will not be able to see or hear anything. If I change her role to attendee, she can still see and hear everything. She just will not be able to speak until we allow her to speak.
Till it's her time, yeah. That sounds like the right thing to me.
Okay.
Okay, great.
I'll, I'll stand hold when it's fine.
And now Commissioner Lottis?
Oh, okay.
Site visits and ex parte contacts.
I've had no ex parte contacts, and I am, I have visited, I'm familiar with the project site at 832 East Ojai Avenue.
Commissioner Trent?
No contacts, but I did do a site visit.
Very good. Commissioner Swift?
I did a site visit as well. I had no communication with ex parte.
Great. And I did the same. I walked around the site this, this morning, in fact, and did not see anyone there, which was not surprising, but had no ex parte contacts. Okay, so that that's clear, let's move on to item four, the general plan and housing element update presentation. And Ms. Matt Ramey, I guess, is going to do this, or is it Ron Whitmore?
We're gonna tag team on it. Matt's gonna lead off.
Very good. Go ahead.
An intro here first, before they, before they dive into the
Okay.
Tonight, we have a presentation of the general plan update. I would even call it a kickoff. We, we kind of did a soft kickoff starting on Monday. We've been working behind scenes with Ron and, and Matt pretty, pretty heavily these last couple of months to get this thing back up to speed. And just to give a little bit of update, this, the contract that we entered into with Ramey and Associates was back in November of last year. But there were, I mean, we were moving forward with items, scheduling face-to-face interviews, and COVID kind of took us for a loop, and we, we kind of had to reassess and reevaluate some of this moving forward, but we are back on, on track here and are working towards and getting this, getting this off the ground and, and moving forward. So with that, they have a PowerPoint. Both Ron and Matt have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm gonna share my screen. I think, I think I, I've got the PowerPoint, you guys. Unless, unless one of you has it.
Or I, James, I think you've given me permission to share as well. I can, I can run it off mine.
That's fine as well, yeah, if there's permission there.
That work for you, Matt?
Yep, yep. Right, right. So without that on my, while it's on my.
Something's happened to your audio, Matt.
Yeah, I was.
Is this, this better, better?
No.
Ron, I guess, I guess you're starting the presentation.
Okay.
Probably muting and unmuting or something, yeah.
Is everybody seeing the slide presentation full screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, while Matt's working on his audio, I'll go ahead and kick off. First of all, I'd just like to thank the commission for giving us time on your agenda. We know you've got other business items, so we appreciate the time. Look forward to having a discussion with you this evening. We're really excited to be working in Ojai, as I mentioned earlier. The firm has done a lot of work in Ventura County. We're familiar with the area. You've got a special place, and the general plan plays a significant role in retaining everything that's special about that place, while at the same time planning for opportunities and challenges that are coming in the future. So we've got a very brief presentation tonight. We very quickly want to give you an overview of the general plan and the update process. We assume you're reasonably familiar with the general plan, given your role as a planning commission, but do want to touch on the basics. We then want to give you a quick overview of our plans for community engagement, because as you know, as with any community plan, and particularly a general plan, it's critical that the public be very involved, that the plan reflects their vision and shared values and, and their goals for the community. We haven't yet kicked off the existing conditions analysis, but we have done some preliminary review of the city, and we want to share with you some of what we found so far. But really, we'd like to preserve as much time as possible at the end for some discussion, both about how you as a commission see the key issues and opportunities facing Ojai, as well as ideas you may have for best to approach, how best to approach engagements. Matt, are you back yet?
I don't know. Am I?
Yes, much better.
Oh, good. I guess I'm back.
Good audio, man.
Sorry, sorry about that, everyone. You can plan for everything, and then something happens. Okay, so next slide, Ron, and just let me say, while you're doing this, thank you all for, for having us. I know I heard Ron say that. This is really exciting, and we really want to get some, just sort of your, your opinions and ideas about the community tonight. So we are, as you know, starting a general plan, and it's really important that everyone be on the same page about what a general plan is. And the general plan is a state-required document that's a long-term policy document that guides future actions in the city. It establishes a vision for 25 to 30 years, and ideally is updated every 15 to 25 years, comprehensively updated every 15 to 25 years. Really, there are three main aspects in, in the big picture about what a general plan does. The first is it preserves and enhances the community's strengths and the wonderful things about the community. And in Ojai, that's clearly going to be really important, just because of how unique and special the community is. The second, it addresses topics of concern and threats to what are the community's strengths. And this is equally important, because no matter how much you may want the community to change, they're always, or not change, there are always forces that are pushing the community towards change. And then the next is it really enables the community to come together to develop a shared vision for the future, to, to coalesce around what's unique and special and what those topics of concern are. There are eight required elements or chapters of a general plan. You see them here. The, a lot of the work really is going to focus on the first two, actually the first three, of land use, circulation, or mobility. But it also includes other infrastructure circulation, such as just under, under the ground infrastructure, and then housing. Next slide. The current general plan was adopted at various times over the last 30 or so years. And here you can see the chapters or elements of the general plan and the year in which they were adopted. It's important to note that the housing element, as you may know, is the only document that is required by the state to be updated on a regular basis. And it is the only element that is, that must be approved by the state, the Housing and Community Development Department. That's why the dates are different here. But at this time, what we are doing is focusing our efforts on, on the core elements of the general plan. So it's not a comprehensive update, but it's really an update to the majority of the really critical items, critical topics in the general plan. Next. So we ask ourselves, why if we, if the community has a general plan, do you need to actually update your general plan? So the first is that the existing general plan, as it was adopted over a series, over time, and it's important to refresh the general plan and to hold a community conversation about the future. Again, this community conversation is one of the most important aspects of a general plan, because it allows people to come together to talk about what they envision for the future. It is an opportunity to address critical topics for the community, including mitigating hazards, ways of preserving community character, maintaining a vibrant downtown, and then balancing tourism with the quality of life in the community, which is really critical for Ojai. There are also a plethora of new state requirements that have occurred over time. And it seems that about every week, we are reading about new ideas from the state about what should be included in the general plan or new laws, particularly recently related to safety and housing. So there are two main topics that we are going to need to focus on. One is environmental justice. The last time that the city updated its general plan, there was not an environmental justice element requirement, and now there is. And this topic is looking at essentially a combination between low-income communities, low-income areas of a community, and areas with disproportionate health and environmental impacts from pollution. The second is climate adaptation, which is a new requirement to include adaptation and resilience in the safety element. The next reason to update the general plan is that since the last general plan was, was, was done, there have been a number of different plans and initiatives that need to be included into the general plan. Area plans, multimodal plans, sustainability initiatives, design guidelines. So it's really an opportunity to step back and make sure that the general plan is current and includes all of these activities. Next. A successful Ojai general plan is going to result in a number of things for the community. Again, first and foremost is that the community should be actively engaged in developing the general plan, as well as implementing the general plan once it is adopted. There should be a citywide consensus on the overall direction of the city. We know that topics of growth and change and development are, are contentious in Ojai and in many communities. And having a conversation now, looking at the big picture of the community, rather than on a project-by-project basis, is a much better time in order to have that conversation about the direction of the community. So there should be clear decisions about growth and character of the different neighborhoods. There should be strategies to advance equity, health, adaptation, and resilience. There should be a housing element that anticipates state laws and meets the, the city's housing needs. Again, over the last five years in particular, there have been a whole large number of laws that the state is requiring communities to follow regarding housing. And we're going to go over that in the process itself, not tonight necessarily, but in the update process, and we will let you know what those, what those laws are and what it means for the community. The successful general plan needs to also be integrated with other city documents, and it needs to have an approach to implement the general plan. So this isn't about just creating a document. This is really about creating a process and a plan that can be implemented over time and that meets the vision of the community. Next slide. We have essentially a five-step process to creating the general plan, to doing this something. The first is listening and learning, and that's really where we are now. So we're reviewing existing policies, identifying issues and opportunities, and reviewing reports. And that's why we're actually going to be asking you tonight about issues and opportunities, because it's really a critical piece of this first stage. From there, we're going to move into visioning, which is to develop the long-term vision and guiding principles for the plan. Once we have the long-term vision in place, we can then look at land use, transportation, and other alternatives in order to both preserve the values of the community and preserve what's unique and special, as well as to address the issues that were uncovered during the listening and learning phase. Once we have the high-level land use and transportation alternatives, we then need to dive into the, to the policy development and write the plan. There's a lot of details and a lot of topics that are non-physical, that don't have to do with land use and transportation that we're going to have to address. And once that plan is, the plan is drafted, we're going to move into the review and adoption phase. Throughout all of this process, we're going to be doing community engagement. As I mentioned, engagement is really critical to the plan itself. So we have objectives for why we are doing engagement. One is we are going to engage the community at key points in the process. As you saw in one of the, just one of the previous slides, we have these different phases of work, and we're going to engage the community at these different phases of work. We are going to use a range of interactive activities. We're going to leverage in-person locations when it's safe, and we're also going to be doing virtual engagement. Kicking off this project originally was at potentially the strangest time we could have done it. It was March 14th, I believe, was the day, and which was essentially, you know, it was, it, the, the world was unraveling when we, when I was coming to Ojai for the kickoff meeting. And in fact, we only had half a kickoff meeting, pretty much because the council had an emergency session, and my interviews with the council members were all cut short so that they could go and deal with COVID. So we have, we've really started in a strange time, and this, because of So we have we've really started in a strange time and this because of the the city's desire to have in person engagement, which I I agree with, it works a lot better. You know, we had to sort of delay the process. So but we are where we are now. So we're going to be doing a combination of in person and virtual engagement. We want to do our best to engage as many people in the community as possible and a diverse cross section of the community as possible. We need to keep people informed throughout the process about what's going on with the general plan and what we're doing. And then ultimately, we're trying to build community ownership of the plan. I don't I don't live in Ojai, staff changes over time, as you know. And so it's really the community who needs to understand what is in the general plan so that it can be implemented over time. Next slide. We have a variety of engagement activities that we've identified that we're we're really kicking off now. We've done some stakeholder interviews, particularly with council members. We're going to do all of the different boards and commissions. We have a project website, we're doing email blasts, we have a fact sheet about the general plan. We're going to do bulletin boards throughout the community, marquees, social media updates, public workshops that are either virtual or in person, and then online surveys. Next. So some of the tools, again, we're going to try, even though there is not a lot of in person engagement, we're going to try and do actual physical bulletin boards where people can share their ideas with each other. We have an online survey that is ready to go, and there's actually two of them. One is is sort of word based and one is map based. And then hopefully, when we can, we're actually going to be able to sit in a room together. If not in large groups, then in small groups and really interact with each other. And that's where it gets really a lot of fun because we're rolling up our sleeves and thinking about the the community and what's needed. Next. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Ron to talk about existing conditions.
Well, thank you, Matt. Again, we're just at the beginning stages of looking at existing conditions, but it is fundamental that the first phase of the project that's as Matt mentioned. Again, you're likely familiar with many of these, but we're we're giving a share sharing a similar presentation with a number of boards and commissions. So it's kind of a snapshot of that range and diversity of issues that we're looking looking at so that people have a sense for the comprehensive nature and the integrated nature of a comprehensive general planning process. I'm sure you're familiar with the city limits and the sphere of influence and the difference between the two. The general plan, as you probably know, covers both areas, they're together considered the planning area. We look at a variety of we look at land use through a number of lenses. We start with the existing land use, which reflects uses that are current. And then obviously, we consider the current general plan, land use classifications, zoning and any specific or area plans that a community may have as well. What's interesting from a planning perspective, looking at your your existing land use is you have a pretty traditional, you know, small town classical, you know, land use settlement pattern, a core surrounded by increasingly lower density residential. As you also probably know, your population is shifting. You've actually have been losing population in the last decade and that population has been aging. You see in the bars, the comparison between twenty thousand, two thousand in blue, twenty ten in green and twenty eighteen in the orange by by age groups. You can see those shifts over time, decreases in the younger age groups all the way up, including up to fifty four and increases in the ages fifty five and over. We've also been decreasing in racial and ethnic diversity. The Tino Hispanic population is a three decreased by three point seven percent and the African American population by a small percent. Still have a fair amount of diversity, but again, it's a it's a pretty pretty non Hispanic white community. Housing is always a challenge and interesting issue to discuss in community. The vast majority of your housing was built before nineteen seventy, and your current rate of building permits is relatively slow. It's pretty typical for California, housing costs for renters are, you know, above the thirty percent that's considered affordable, but not quite as high as many other communities in California. Interesting to see is over time, and between two thousand and twenty eighteen, the share of owner versus renter occupied homes has stayed relatively stable. The community is largely pretty low density, single family residential with some multifamily concentrated largely near the the town core with some other looks like multifamily complexes near the edges of the city. Again, as Matt mentioned earlier, like general plan covers a range of topics, including parks and recreation and other public facilities. One aspect of that we look at is the access that everybody within the community has to different facilities, including parks. And so in addition to mapping the facilities and parks, we'll actually look at the homes that are within a comfortable quarter mile walk to each of those facilities to get a sense for equitable access to facilities and parks throughout the community. And then, as is critical for all communities, when done well, planning results not only in economic development and shared prosperity across the community, but also fiscal stability over time. Thinking carefully about the main sources of revenue for a city's budget and how different planning elements will affect that revenue into the future. Interesting, this is just a quick snapshot at the relative distribution of employment across different sectors over time from oh seven and ten years later in twenty seventeen. You can see that at a relative basis, the leisure sector has increased and agriculture has decreased.
You meant leisure and education, not leisure and employment?
Uh, yeah, sorry, thank you. Sorry, it's a typo. I apologize. So again, we're doing these presentations in part to bring people up to speed on where we're at in the process. But for us, for us also, it's a really useful opportunity to begin to hear from people who are very active in city affairs and very familiar with many of the the issues facing the community. And so time permitting, as much as you can allow us on the agenda, we'd very much not only be happy to answer any questions you may have about the process, but really particularly interested in beginning to hear from you what you see as the major issues and opportunities that are facing Ojai at this. Chair, I'll defer to you to manage the Q and A and discussion.
Okay, well, we'll start. Commissioner Nolan.
I had a question, and this has to do with the climate adaptation. I believe you said it would be in the safety element. My question is, is there a way to integrate climate adaptation throughout the general plan? And 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 or maybe have it in the safety element? Does it have to just be there or can it be integrated throughout?
No, that that's a great question, and I I didn't touch on that. So thank you for the softball pitch to give you a little bit more information. The the general plan has, as I mentioned, eight elements that are required by the state. In state law, there's specific things you have to include in. You have to address in the general plan, they've organized it for understanding by these eight elements. However, a community can organize a general plan in any way that it wants, and you can include topics that are beyond those eight. So, you know, you can you can have a, you know, I don't know, a planetary viewing element if you want. I mean, you can do really anything that you want, and much you don't want that. But but you you can really do anything that you want in terms of topics. And so, yes, climate adaptation can be and and climate change can be included throughout. And and you're absolutely right also in that when you have something that is a cross cutting topic that addresses that addresses conservation and open space and how we how land is used and transportation, that you really do need to think about it across all topics.
Even housing?
And absolutely housing, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, Kathy Lottis? Are you muted? Are you muted?
Well, I'm sorry, one second. There we go. I I do have one question or a question on that, on the climate adaptation. Well, number one, I I'm concerned that we're not talking about climate mitigation. I I think they go hand in hand, and I think that we do need to pay attention to what we can do as a community for mitigation, which is to reduce the GHG emissions rather than adapt. I mean, the adaptation is important, but we first of all need to do whatever we can do as a community to reduce the GHG emissions. And I think I think the state guidelines say that, I mean, there are state statewide goals for meeting the GHG emissions. So I think I'm assuming that you would be talking about that, but that's more mitigation than adaptation.
Yes, that is correct. We are we will be talking about that as well. We are not, we are not going to be doing a climate, a climate action plan that is not in our scope of work. But that is certainly a possibility, and yes, we will be dealing with that. And what I'm also hearing you saying, getting to sort of the from your perspective questions that we have here on the screen, is that climate, climate change is a threat to the community and something that you need to address.
Yeah, I mean, existential threat to our
That's right.
But so in the when you talk in the future, personally, I would recommend that you that you include mitigation and adaptation in your presentation. Because a lot of people are not thinking in terms of what the difference is, but I I think that is quite important, a difference, and that it needs to be talked about. And and furthermore, there are that we do need to talk about what the statewide goals are and how we're how we as the community. I mean, granted, we're small, we're not like Ventura County that had has a lot of opportunity to mitigate, but did not, in my opinion, did not really address it. So so we need to talk about what what it is that we can do in terms of meeting the state goals on that. And I I had another, let me see, wait, there, I have any more on that? Oh, and I I so I followed the county general plan process pretty closely. And they did a cross cutting thing with their climate action policies. And it frankly, it turned into a nothing burger. And it's because when you, I mean, I think that it's it's when you you kind of you 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 water down the importance of the climate action policies and discussion when you put a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there. I know we don't, I I think the council did not put a climate action policy or a climate change element in the scope, so I don't think we're talking about that. But I would suggest that we think very hard about the best way to address the climate action problem. And all I can say is that the county experience resulted in a big mess with with nothing. With not they they don't even meet the state goals for CH two emissions. So they can't, I mean, they they just they couldn't. So to me, that is a big failure. I know people have been positive about it, but bottom line is it did it's not doing so well in terms of addressing climate change. So I'm quite concerned about somehow doing cross cutting policies because we really need some focus on that, and that's 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 my suggestion on that.
Good, I I'd like to to add, I think it's an important topic that we need to see in in every relevant part of the general plan. I am, I am, if not equally concerned, at least very concerned when you talk about adaptation. When it comes to to the climate, there is still, you know, a variety of opinions in the community in the country about what ought to be done. But if if there is anything that we have to absolutely adapt to, it is the legislature continually moving the goalposts on us. And we don't have a choice about about meeting the state law and the mandates from the legislature. I don't know what Ventura County is going to do about their failure to meet it. I suspect it won't be anything pleasant. But I think we need to be at least as concerned about about what the legislature says we must and what the legislature says we must not do as a city. And take that as a starting point when we start talking about the quality of life, the characteristics of the city, what what flexibility do we have to preserve the unique strengths and mitigate the weaknesses within the framework of what the legislature say? So that's the end of my comments. Commissioner Trent, do you have something you'd like to ask or state?
Yeah, I wanted to kind of go back to some of the ideas that we think about Ojai's strengths and weaknesses. I think some of our strengths that we need to outline in the general plan is our education. We have our K through twelve education in this valley is pretty darn strong. We've got quite a few private schools that perform very well. And our public school system is doing better. So I think we need to highlight that education system within the valley as a as a strength. I think also, you know, obviously, it's the spiritual retreat that is is part of our valley and a part of our heritage in this valley needs to be highlighted. Obviously, tourism is something that's always been here. So that's another strength. But, you know, I was reading through the the old general plan, and it focused a lot on tourism. It didn't really focus on anything else. So I'd like to see other aspects of the valley, the strengths, such as education, such as the spiritual retreats, such as our hiking trails, such our natural beauty that we have outside of just tourism. I think that would be awesome. And as far as threats go, obviously, climate change is big. I feel that as a city, what can we do to to address it? We don't have a lot of manufacturing here, so there's not a lot of emission controls that we can put on there. I mean, obviously, we could look to reduce the number of cars, help with the transportation and transportation and the and the you know, the nature of of how folks get around in town. But I think that where we have an opportunity is within fire mitigation. That's going to be the big threat to Ojai is is fire threat. It's obviously getting hotter, so that's something that we need to address as well. And lack of water. So those issues that we have in this town, we're not tied into state water, we're reliant on the Ventura watershed. So we need to address that. So how are we going to deal with that issue going forward? And how are we going to deal with long term droughts? And if we have dead trees in the city, how are we going to deal with those? We need to make sure that our trees are alive. We need to make sure that we cut down the dead ones so we don't have our town burn up if we have San Ana winds blowing at us. So anyway, I I feel like those are some areas that we can specifically address. We can look at, you know, how buildings are constructed, make sure that they have proper fire mitigation, make sure that they have water reclamation. You know, there's lots of different ideas around just what buildings can do. So I feel like that's a threat, obviously. And then another threat that I feel like we need to address is, and your slide brought it up, is we have a lot of young families that are leaving Ojai. We it's being replaced by older retired folks, which is okay, but it's just the demographics of our town is shifting. And so we got to figure out what kind of town do we want? Do we want a retirement community? Or do we want a vibrant town with with youth and, you know, a thriving school system? And it just depends on what we want and what our vision is. And it just depends on what we want and what our vision is. Because the housing problem is another issue. I feel like we just don't have the land for big developments. We don't have the water for big developments. So any sort of affordable housing that we put on the table, I don't know if it's going to hit the mark. I don't know if it's going to fulfill the need that we need. But I do feel like we have an opportunity to help teachers in this community with affordable housing. So if there's something that we can do in that space to help our education, to help attract more young families to this area with a very, um, tight focus on educational quality, I feel like we can attract more young families to this area and make it more vibrant. So that's, that was just a couple of things.
Perfect. Uh, Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Trent took quite a bit off my list. But I did have a couple of just random questions. It looks like the general plan gets updated every ten to fifteen years. Is there a, a way it's that far away and not sooner? I'm just asking because of technology and climate change and what we're going through now. I mean, things are changing so fast. It seems like if we didn't readdress this in the next ten to fifteen years, we're going to be left in the dark ages.
That's a great question, Jake. I have been reading and sorry to interrupt, but, um.
Yeah, go ahead and answer.
No, I was just going to say we do need to address technology. I feel like obviously we have parking issues in town. We don't have the resources to enforce that parking. But with some of the technology that's available now with I O T devices and smart cities, you know, there's things that can be done to help address some of the, uh, infrastructure or lack of infrastructure that we have as far as parking enforcement goes.
Let me, let me try and answer that question. Uh, you, you know, it's, I'll, I'll tell you it is one that I, I spend probably too much time thinking about. And, uh, you know, so there, it's, there's multiple parts to the answer to it. So one is that it takes a lot of time and effort to update a general plan. And if you do a comprehensive update, like, um, you know, dealing with a lot of elements like we're doing now, it's, it, you, you actually, most communities fifteen years is like the, it's at least fifteen years. Um, we're actually working in Thousand Oaks right now. And the last time they updated or worked on their really a comprehensive update to their land use element was nineteen seventy, um, which is a little bit too long. So, um, it, you know, it, it gets a little stale when it's that old. But, you know, what we want to do is actually set up a process in the general plan where you're able to, on a more regular basis, evaluate what the plan is um, and what it's doing and what changes you need to make. So we need an evaluation methodology within the plan so that you're not waiting ten, fifteen, twenty years to really look at it again. Um, and so we really encourage you to do that. You know, the other, the other piece of it is how detailed do you get in the general plan? And sometimes we, we want, when we do this process, we want the general plan to do everything. And for a general plan to really last a lot longer, what we want is for it to really address the vision and the, um, the values of the community, because those don't change as rapidly as technology. You think about it, some of the greatest cities that we will probably ever visit, you know, were, were built, you know, two hundred, five hundred, a thousand years ago. And it's those aspects which are still valuable that, um, that, you know, remain the same. So we're going to have to keep thinking about change, about cities, because cities evolve. They're, they're organic creatures that change over time, and so it's about managing that change. So we're going to have to think about that. Um, but, um, we'll build it in, but we'd love your help with that, about how to use it and how you want to update it on a regular basis.
I had one more question. Not off subject, but it's kind of random. As far as getting the, the general plan out to the public and getting the public involved with it, which I feel is very, very important. Are we as commissioners allowed to help spread the word ourselves via social media? Or does it have to be all, um, done by you guys?
There's probably a legal question in there somewhere. But, but I'm going to actually answer it, which is the more that we can get people who are connected to the community to spread the word about this, the better it's going to be. We like, if we can get everyone involved in the community, that's great. Um, you know, I think there, you can't speak for the general plan, but to tell people to get involved, to have conversations with them, to bring them to the process. It, we, we, i- if we could require it of you, we would do that, but we're not allowed.
Uh, Commissioner Swift, just to jump in there, um, the general plan and amendments to the general plan will eventually become an issue for the commission to consider. And so I would caution making any pronouncements ahead of time as to various elements of the plan. Um, there's nothing to, I believe Lucas, um, stop me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it's some, normally, there's public hearings and public meetings. I mean, I don't know how that'll change in the COVID era. Um, there are public hearings and public meetings, um, with respect to, um, the, uh, you know, when, when, when there are general plan updates. And so I'm not sure what the, what the city plans on doing this time around, given that we're in a sort of a unique situation where we can't have, you know, thirty-five, forty people in an auditorium or so, anything like that. Uh, and then the next point really quickly is on social media, there is, I would, and I'm, we, I'm sure you'll get a memo from my firm about this, but there is a new bill regarding the Brown Act and social media. And so I would caution, um, posting, um, or sharing posts from other members of the commission, uh, because the Brown Act now takes a more expansive view of meet, of serial meetings on social media. And so that bill was just, uh, passed by the legislature, so I would caution on that point as well.
Yeah, but, but I think, um, you know, correct me if I'm wrong here, spreading the word about the general plan, about meetings that are happening to get people involved, even through social media, just to say, hey, we're happy, there's a workshop on this, or take the survey is okay, correct?
That's correct. I, I just, um, my own, as long as advocacy in one way or the other, because you are going to be considering and voting on this at some point.
Uh, does, okay, uh, Nikhil, does advocacy include suggesting that there are appropriate topics to discuss within any individual element of the general plan? Without expressing an opinion on the either side of an issue, but to say, these are things that we think are important to consider in the housing element or the land use element. Is that, is that allowed?
It's fine during a public hearing like this. I'd be leery of doing that in, uh, in a more public setting on social media or, you know, um, if especially, because it, I mean, it's entirely dependent on what's actually said, but I would caution against that just because I don't, you wouldn't want to have to recuse yourself when it comes time, and so.
Exactly, okay.
I would err on the side of caution there.
All right. Any other comments from commissioners? I have at least one more.
Yeah, I can go after you, Steve. I just, I do have a couple more.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I can only see six windows at a time, so I shift back and forth. If I want to see Commissioner Lottis, um, I have to go to the second set of six windows. So I'll try to continue to do that, just so we don't lose everybody's opportunity to speak here. Uh, to the Rainian associates, folks, you've already picked up on the demographic shift, at least the, the age category shift in the city. What you may not have seen yet from the school district or wherever is that the school age children, that is K through twelve or TK through twelve in the school district, which is more than just the city limits. It's the, a good chunk of the valley goes down into, to, um, into Miramonte and Miners Oaks, not as far as Oakview, but it does take up the east end and, and the upper Ojai. The school age children population today is about fifty percent of what it was twenty years ago. Uh, I think that's, that's a reflection of the fact that that fifty-five to sixty-four year old group has grown. Those are people who don't have children in the local public schools anymore, the K through twelve. Um, and, uh, Commissioner Trent was certainly right. We have a very active private school population here. I fear that at some point in the future, the private school population may be larger than the public school population. Um, one way that it was expressed to me by a member of the community, he said, if you can afford to live in Ojai, you can't afford to work in Ojai. And if you can, and if you work in Ojai, you can't afford to live in Ojai. So it's, it's, we're on the horns of a dilemma here in, in trying to maintain, uh, um, let's call it a more normal distribution of age groups in the population, simply because the, the, uh, real estate costs here are quite high, and that is squeezing out young families. So that's, that's the problem that I see here. And I'm not sure what, what the solutions are, but we'll certainly be looking forward to seeing, because you've worked in other places as well, uh, if there are things that other people have done or at least instantiated in their policies that could help Ojai from becoming a retirement community, as someone said here. So.
Can I ask you just a, a quick follow-up question? I know you, you guys have something else on your agenda. But, um, you know, I think this is kind of a big, um, one of the big topics that we're definitely going to have to deal with, climate change as well is a big topic. But, you know, is this about, um, is it the high housing costs that have stopped families from moving here? Or, uh, I also heard you say it's also the jobs that are there. So it's that sort of combination of population, jobs and housing costs that are changing the dynamic in the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have exact numbers at hand, but I would venture to say that the majority of the employment in the city is in hospitality and retail.
Yeah.
And, and that's tourist oriented. Um, and, and that combined with the general aging of the population and, uh, people not wanting to sell their houses for less than they paid for them is going to keep driving housing costs up, I think. The, the numbers here are crazy in terms of the, the prices of housing.
Yeah. Okay, so we can, we can look at the types of jobs in the community and the, um, the salaries of those jobs compared to the cost of housing and what you need and, and see that mismatch.
You also look at, um, the, um, I mean, it's certainly is a hot topic of the, right now. Um, the, um, percentage of workers working remotely and what that might trend into the future as well and what that might mean for Ojai.
Yeah, that's a tough one. I, I, I agree it's an important topic. It's tough to really get data around that at this point. And, um, you know, it's, it, it feels like wrestling with a grease slug. Uh, sorry about the expression, but you know, it's like, we just don't know where it's going, right? We kind of know that we're in this world now, but we don't know when it's going to stop. And we don't know what the true long-term impact to the way that we work actually is. So.
What we, what we do know is that if you're engaged in hospitality or retail sales, it's very difficult to work from home.
That is true.
Yeah.
If you're in manufacturing or general office type environments, it's much easier, and we don't have much of that here.
Yeah. And, and Matt, I don't know if you can look into your research, but, um, a lot of the folks who live and work in Ojai, uh, well, I shouldn't say that, live in Ojai, they work out of town and they commute, um, obviously with, uh, COVID, they're working remotely. But, uh, if there's a way that we can look at what businesses, um, are growing in cities like Ventura, Carpinteria, Santa Barbara, if I'm not mistaken, I know that there are some, there's several high-tech companies that are doing really well, specifically in Carpinteria and Ventura, um, and those employees like living here. So I don't know if we can highlight that or if we can make Ojai an attractive place for people that, you know, don't mind commuting to Carpinteria or don't mind commuting to Ventura, um, and, and make our transportation system, um, or public transportation system a little bit more, um, I don't know, desirable.
Yeah, I mean, this has climate change implications as well, and, um, you know, we can certainly look at where people work. Um, we're actually also, um, just at this point, we're working on the Ventura, City of Ventura general plan too. And so we're doing economic analysis. We have an economist on that project who also worked on the Ventura County plan. So we actually have some good data that I think we're going to be able to bring from these other projects and just feed you this data. And then there's of course, regional economic studies that have been done out of C L U and other places that are, um, they're talking about regional economy and, you know, the regional economy itself is shrinking, it's not growing.
Right.
Um, and so, and we can give you some reports to look at, because it's really fascinating what's going on.
Okay, that, that's great. Yeah.
Excellent. Um, any more questions from commissioners?
Um, just, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. You're next.
Oh, just one more question. On, um, so who are we considering the stakeholders to be in this? And it does relate back to, um, community participation. So how, what are the groups or have you, have you defined any of that or do you just, it's just a general?
I have, um, every time I get this question, I swear off using the term stakeholder. So you, you can see I'm kind of an informal person with, with how I, I work with folks. But so a, a stakeholder, so we do what we call quote stakeholder interviews. We could just call them interviews um, at the beginning of the process. We, we were going to talk to about ten or fifteen people, because you get a real good sense of what's going on in the community. We actually shifted that and are going to all of the boards and commissions, a bunch of the boards and commissions and some of the, the, um, you know, some other groups in the community, so that we can, what we're trying to do is just get a picture of what's going on. Um, the term stakeholder really broadly is really any resident, anyone who has a business interest, anyone who was an advocate, anyone, um, who has a stake in the future of the community. Now, I think one could argue that, that some people have more of a stake than others for a variety of reasons. But ultimately, what we want to do with engagement is we want to talk to and hear from and engage as many people as possible in the process, because even people who are just visitors to the community could be considered a stakeholder. They have a perspective on the community that whether you as the city council or the planning commission want to take it into account, you know, it's a perspective.
Well, I encourage the younger, uh, commission members to come forth with, uh, suggestions for where to look for stakeholders, uh, because I think you probably can, um, connect into this, some parts of the community that, that, for example, myself, I don't really have a real good, uh, uh, idea about.
Yeah, and I would encourage all of you to think about, and it's this, um, this second bullet here, which is, you know, what are the ways that you think we can reach people and engage people in the process? Whether there's other meetings that are happening, whether there's, um, email lists that we, that you have that you could order emails to, uh, you know, anything that you could do, and you don't have to answer now, and you can, you know, maybe, um, email Lucas with ideas, but anything that you can think of, please feed to us, because you all know the community far better than, than we are probably ever going to in terms of how to connect. So, um, but, you know, please let us know what your thoughts are on that.
A good example of that, last week at the Parks Commission meeting, they have a youth representative, and she pointed out that the school district has both student dedicated and parent dedicated portals through which they send out communications, and those are often fantastic ways to get the word out. Um, because, you know, students may not read the stuff, but if they do, it's great, a great way to get them involved and to hear that youth voice. Parents very often pay very close attention to communications from schools. It was a great way to get to a lot of those families with young children. And, and as you've all noted, it's going to be really important to hear perspectives with, of those younger families and the youth. Really, it's, you know, it's their future and you want to, you want to get a handle on this demographic shift and really plan a community for the future that meets, it's, meets that younger population's needs.
Yeah, but, um, Ojai's got a very vibrant, um, social media presence, Facebook, Twitter. Um, so if we can get engaged in that, I think that would certainly.
There's, there's a community called Next Door as well.
Yeah.
That, that may have one or more instantiations in Ojai, and you'll certainly reach a lot of people that way.
Any particular social media platform besides Next Door?
Well, Facebook, Twitter, those are.
Okay, because I know the city has a Facebook page, but.
Derek Quilsey?
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to mention, and you probably already thought of this, but, um, you know, I was going to mention, of course, the chamber, of course, you know, the businesses, but a lot of them are families and have children and. You know, I was gonna mention, of course, the chamber, of course, you know, the businesses, but a lot of them are families and have children and multiple people living at a house. Um, and I will say that, you know, when you mail, you contact these organizations, they're probably gonna be, have an email list that goes out to the entire valley. But nevertheless, a portion of them will live within the city limits, so.
Sure.
And there's some like local nonprofits that have big email lists that circulate throughout the valley also. That we could provide names for.
That would be great.
That would, that, you know, I'm sure would be um, open to. Circulating an announcement.
Yeah, well, especially now with, you know, one of the best times to engage people is at the beginning. You know, no one wants to kind of hear about a process like, by the way, your general plan's gonna be adopted tomorrow night, why don't you come and talk about it? You know, we really, we really want it now. In this week, because like the questions in our survey are pretty similar to the four questions here about from your perspective. It's a little easier to answer for, in the survey, but like, these are really the questions that people have the easiest time answering. You know, not where, where should housing be located in the community and why? It's a pretty technical question.
Right.
I just had, I just had my last question, just following back on tourism and leisure as being. Probably our two big, largest employers' jobs. But I just wanted to touch on, you know, construction and contractors is also a really huge. Job force up here in this town that I think's been affected as well. I'd like to kind of see a little bit more emphasis on that. To protect the local contractors who have been here for multiple generations. I have noticed, you know, the influx of out of town. Uh, people moving in also comes out of town contractors. That may or may not have business licenses, might not, you know, pay what they need to pay to. You know, give back to this community and it does affect the locals here who. May or may not be able to afford it, but because of the work. That we do have in Ojai, because there's so much construction. Um, that influx of out of town contractors is making it definitely difficult for a lot of locals to remain, to stay here because of that.
Good point.
I'd have second that. We had a major remodel done in our house two years ago, two and a half years ago. Uh, our general contractor is a resident of the city. But among all of his subcontractors, not a single one, to my knowledge, was. But nearly all of them lived in Miners Oaks or Miramonte. With the exception of, and Jake will know these people, I'm sure, shadow roofing came in, coming out of Ventura. Uh, but we did the best that we could to uh, to support local business. And, and I think that, that. That could be a theme throughout the general plan when it, when one or element or another touches on. The economic side of the community. That there ought to be some consideration of supporting local business. Not a requirement. I don't, I don't want, don't want to start passing laws saying you can't hire someone. From Camarillo. But it, it ought to be a consideration for anyone who is looking for. Any kind of service, whether it's construction or house cleaning or. Yard work, whatever. It, it, it ought to be a consideration for anyone in the market for a service. To uh. To be aware of, of the local businesses and their capabilities.
Yeah, on that, I, I have talked to some local other contractors and, you know, there, there is concern. But we, we were kind of wondering about putting together like an Ojai local, you know, contractor directory. I know there's some other stuff on Facebook, but you know, kind of giving the locals. An easy way to access, you know, framers, plumbers. All that kind of good stuff and kind of show that, kind of show where they're at, because I know if you go on Yelp and all these other places, it's still gonna show. You know.
Everybody within fifty miles comes up on Yelp, yeah.
So, you know, just a thought, I just, I wanted to make sure I, uh, you know. Spoke up on this, because I, I think that's a, that's a big, uh. That's a big part of this community.
Can I, can I jump in really quickly on this? Because I think this is actually, this conversation is really. Important and highlights both what a general plan can do and can't do. Um, and so the, a theme of local businesses and ways to support local businesses very broadly from, that the city can do from a policy perspective. Is really, you know, and the, the overall economy, those are great topics for the general plan. Um, Mr. Swift, your, your ideas. Are great ideas, but they wouldn't necessarily make their way into a general plan. Um, in terms of that. And so I think it's important to, to consider how a general plan really works, because it is this long-term document. Um, it has an implementation portion to it, but you know, I think we want to make sure that it's doing the things it's supposed to do and not doing things it's not supposed to do.
Sure.
There are plenty of avenues outside of a general plan to do great things like a, um, you know, like this list you're talking about. I just wouldn't necessarily, and I'm not trying, I don't, I'm trying to shoot down, I'm trying to use this as like an educational time as we're thinking about a general plan and what.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I, yeah, I just thought regardless, at least, you know, the idea's on the table and maybe it's, it's something that can be a little side project for the planning commission.
And Commissioner Swift has, I mean, brings up a good topic is, um. You know, the small businesses in Ojai are non-franchise. Uh, they're non-corporate, they're, you know, they're, they're very quaint. So I think that's a, a strength of Ojai and that's something that we would want to highlight in the general plan. Um, is to keep that sort of, that, that trend, that, that model going forward.
Okay, more, more questions or comments from commissioners? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I, I'm sure that I, when I take a moment to reflect, I, I, I'm sure I'll be able to um, articulate more. More concerns, but um, I wasn't really prepared for. The input tonight, but I would just say that um, in the past, Ojai has been a tree city and I think we're working on. Reestablishing that. That certification and um, I'm assuming that in the conservation element, um. Work, I, I kind of forgot the, all the topics, but conservation, open space element that. Um, one very important consideration that I think that we should be talking about is the tree canopy. Uh, what we have, the health of it, um. Where there are opportunities to maybe improve the tree canopy. The, 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 the quality of the tree canopy in terms of um. What's native vegetation versus maybe what's ornamental and, and how, kind of how those. Those both contribute to what we have as tree canopy and also I think it might be um. Very helpful to, to set the groundwork for addressing. Non-native vegetation and particularly. Uh, vegetation that might be considered um. Hazardous in terms of fire. There, in, in terms of not being fu- a fire resistant, but uh, you know, very susceptible like palm trees and maybe some of the mucilipus and. Uh, but I, you know, um. Just so that you, you talk about it and so that we can develop policies from, from what you talk about and then we could. Um, adjust our zoning regulations accordingly.
Okay, Commissioner Nolan, you had some comments?
Yeah, um, two things. Number one, if we had some additional. Information, especially in regards to how uh, we can help engage the greater community for participation. Um, is that something we would give to our planning director or, or community development director or manager rather? Um, or is there an email or something that we would be sending information to you directly? Or, or would we just, oh, next steps, perfect. Okay, so I'll have, I'll copy all that information down and get it. Or maybe you can email it to a staff, that would be wonderful. Yeah.
Is this chart, is this stack of charts uh, going to be? Available to the public? Lucas, do you know?
Yes, absolutely. And in, in fact, if you look at the project webpage, that is actually up and running currently.
Yeah.
Go to that webpage, it has, it has a host of information, including the mayor's um. A mayor's video as well in the beginning, so. Yep.
I had a second question.
Yes, ma'am.
So my second question is, it kind of aligns with uh, Commissioner Lawdis was uh, bringing up. And also something that you had at the beginning of the presentation. In regards to integrating like say area plans or other plans that the city might have into the general plan. And uh, we do have a community forest management plan, which um. Is passing, being updated and I know city council has looked at that. Would that be something in this process that we get updated and then integrated into the general plan or would an update be separate? Uh, from the general plan update?
Yeah, good, good question. So there's, there's two points um, to talk about here. So one is that. The update we're doing is not a comprehensive update to every single element of the plan, and this was a council's direction. Um, and it's really focusing on land use, housing, transportation, safety. And environmental justice. So the other topics like conservation, open space, um, noise. Are going to be updated relative to the policies in those other chapters, but they're not gonna be, you know, a heavy, kind of a heavy touch. In, in there. So, so that's one um, thing going, um. Going back to a previous question and then the, the implementation plans. Um, will not be updated as part of this. Those will be implementation actions to update them, to make them consistent with the general. Now, they can be added, they can sort of happen in parallel. You know, we can encourage, um, you know, we, we're very collaborative, so you know, there are opportunities for, you know, people to, you all look at, at. Chapters of the plan that we're not looking at and there's good ideas, then you know, we'll talk about that internally and if. We want to, if we can all put them through and you want to put them through, let's, let's do it. So, but it's just really a matter of, of focus and, and effort.
Okay.
Um, and then, and then just really quickly. There is so much to talk about with those four questions that we had up there on the previous slide about, you know, you're gonna have ideas that are gonna come up. And you're gonna think about after this, this sort of from your perspective. After this meeting, you're gonna be, it's gonna be churning in your brain for a while and so you're gonna want to keep. Um, sharing ideas and, and we encourage you to, we want to hear from you. So please ship, keep sharing your ideas, we will read it, we'll respond. If we need to have a, you know, twenty minute sidebar on the phone or video, we can do that. Um, just, just let us know.
So real quick.
No serial meetings, but yes.
For example, like this screen. If we were to just copy and paste this on social media to the locals, is that something that's acceptable? Because I think this, these are the questions that are pretty easy to get out and get people to start responding.
The survey covers a lot of those questions, so I would, I would point people to the survey and have them take the survey.
Okay.
And you could also post a link to the city's project webpage with this presentation on it as well.
Cool.
Nice. Yeah.
Yes, please do that.
Spread the opportunity for people to get engaged, I think is what you're saying.
Uh, absolutely. We have a lot of new platforms now than we did, you know, a while ago, so I think we should.
Yeah.
Use every.
The reality is that Zoom actually, Zoom and virtual meetings really give us an opportunity to engage in a different way. Um, and sometimes while we really miss in-person meetings and, you know, sitting in a room with you all face to face, that. There are real opportunities that make, you know, us going to all of the boards and commissions really possible because we're not local. Right? So like, let's take advantage of these, of this virtual environment we're in for, for, for good.
Yeah, being a prophet in your own house is not always the best thing. If, if there are no other comments or questions at the moment. I want to thank Matt and Ron for coming and presenting this material to us tonight. I think, gentlemen, you can see that the planning commission and the commissioners individually. Are all champing at the bit. To be engaged in this process. And I'm hoping that, that this meeting tonight is not the last time that you engage. With the commission as a whole or with individual commissioners. Because we see a lot of things that we would like to see done or undone, if you will. And um, we need to get all that information to you. Uh, maybe a start would be for each of the commissioners to take the survey.
Idea.
And um, I, I see uh, Ron with his thumb up, that's good. Let's at least start with that and then. Uh, when, when the time is appropriate and in the not too distant future, I hope. We can schedule another meeting after we've all been through the survey and seen what kinds of questions. You're going to ask. I'm sure it's much more detailed than your presentation tonight. And then, and then we can kind of go from there. What do you think? Will that work?
Yes, that, that's great. We'll circle back with Lucas. Um, we have key times when we're gonna be coming back to you. But you know, I think if there's more, um, you know, at, at those different phases that I mentioned earlier, um, but I think if there's more opportunity. Um, and you guys want more time, then um, you know, communicate with Lucas and we'll figure out how to make that happen. Um, you guys have been great, you're big picture thinkers, it seems like a great commission, so we're excited.
Well, thanks for the kind words, but we are interested in doing something. We've been, we've been uh. Asking the city council for a year or more, how do we get involved? And I think you've given us a lot of answers tonight.
Great.
Thank you very much for your time. And I think we'll move on in the uh, in the agenda for this evening. We still have a couple of weighty topics to get through.
Well, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna sign off here. Good night, everyone. We look forward to talking to you soon.
Be here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have uh, our first public hearing item, design review permit DRP nineteen double oh nine. And conditional use permit CUP nineteen dash double oh seven. Uh, about Hakani sushi restaurant and a potential move. Uh, Lucas, could you take us through an introduction to this topic, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Quilsey. My name is Lucas Seibert. Uh, community development manager with the city of Ojai. The item that the commission asked for consideration tonight for a public hearing. Is uh, is a relocation of an existing restaurant. The existing restaurant is located at nine, six, seven East Ojai Avenue. South side of um, Ojai Avenue. It's looking to relocate to a vacant building currently, um, located at eight, three, two East Ojai Avenue. The um. The existing use, and just to give you a little bit of background regarding this, this site. The original use was actually a single-family residence. And up until about nineteen seventy-seven, the use changed. And was updated from, or modified from a residential use to an office use. Where it has maintained an office use status. Our records show from nineteen seventy-seven all the way up to um, today. Now what we're looking at is, is once again, a change in the use for this site from an office use to a restaurant use. And that restaurant use um, has some, some key components that come along with it. When you're converting an office space to a restaurant space that is including outdoor um, dining. We're looking at uh, parking as, as a component to that. And in addition to that, there is an addition proposed for this as well, that, that is right around two hundred and seventy-two square feet. Located at the western side of the um, the building. I'll show a site plan here in a moment because I'm sure that we'll want to speak to that site plan. Um, but for now, I just want to give you a brief overview and then we can. We can start in with, with the questions. I also have uh, the applicant. It looks like we also have the arborist here as well. And before we go any further. Commission, uh, Vice Chair Nolan. I think, don't we, don't we have to go through, are you recusing yourself here for this item tonight?
That's right. I did, I'm just waiting to be put on hold.
Uh, let's, let's do this.
Yeah, because I don't want to go any further.
Hello, I just want to let you know that they're.
Uh, James, are you gonna put? Um, Commissioner Nolan? In the.
In the penalty box.
Yeah.
Waiting area, yeah.
Should she be able to see and hear what's going on or not?
Um, so she can only take part in the public comment. Um, and so she can, I mean. Since it's, you know, it, it, that's fine that she can see or hear, but I would. Keep her on mute till the public comment, um.
Okay, that is.
Yeah. I think maybe for the purposes of um. Just optics, I guess, um, we'd also want to maybe turn the camera off, um, because right now, the, the public comment hasn't opened yet. It's only the commission. It's only the commission at this point. And then they'll, once they open it for public comment, then Commissioner Lottis can, uh, will not, she would be in her role as.
Commissioner Nolan.
Uh, sorry, Commissioner Nolan, but not actually in her role as commissioner, would be participating. And so, um, I, I think perhaps it would be best if we would keep her in the, um.
She, she has been moved to attendee. That means she can see and hear everything, but we cannot see or hear her.
Okay, that, that's fine. And, and, um, the recu, and the recusal goes to the vote as well, just so.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. As I was saying, sorry, just wanted to make sure we addressed that. Um, as I was saying, there's two outdoor dining areas. We'll look at the site plan here in a moment. When, when you're looking at an increase or an intensification of use, the change in use from office, which is really kind of a lower type of, of use type to a restaurant, which is clearly a higher type use type, especially within our code, as it's identified, there's additional parking that's required. It pushes it from, um, from basically 11 parking spaces up to, uh, 15 is what we're, what we're looking at here. Um, now, and that is for the interior space of the restaurant itself. Now, um, looking at the, the site itself.
Lucas, we're having some.
Sorry, what'd you say, Nikhil?
I was gonna say, are, uh, is anyone else having issues? Listen here, Lucas, or I think it's just me. I'm sorry. My connection is.
Uh, your video is, is starting and stopping.
Go ahead, Lucas.
Okay. Um, so what the applicant has secured is a shared parking agreement. And that is with the site across the street. And I'll, we'll, we'll talk about that more, uh, later. And it's for, um, the, the site itself is actually a, a shopping center, um, underutilized shopping center. And that shopping center has been identified as having roughly 58 parking spaces and surplus. Uh, with that surplus, the four parking spaces that we're looking here is very minimal in terms of what would be occupied here as a part of that, um, reciprocal parking agreement. With that staff, I'll keep it brief here. With that staff is recommending approval subject to the findings and conditions outlined in the draft resolution. Um, with that, if the commission has any questions of staff, uh, I could certainly answer them. I know the applicants are here as well and available, um, and may even have a presentation. I know the architect, Nick Oatway is here, uh, the arborist, Michael Naba. And then obviously the, uh, owner, which is, uh, Mr. Han is here as well for Hakani sushi.
He was here. I don't see him now.
He's AFK.
Okay, uh, any commissioners have questions for staff, please?
Um, yeah, just a quick, uh, question. The change of use for the additional parking that's needed. You mentioned that it's 15 for the interior, um, considering that there's going to be outdoor dining, and I believe looking at the plans, it looks like there's going to be 24 additional seats. So is that part of the requirement for parking as well? No.
Yeah. So it's, it's not within the, within our code, outdoor dining, um, has a zero parking requirement.
Okay.
It actually specifies none within our code.
Okay.
Actually, I think there's probably a, a related topic that, that we ought to bring up here. And Lucas and I have been around the tree several times on it. If you look in the code, the definition of outdoor dining and Lucas has used, has used the phrase in the, the common understanding of outdoor dining, that is outside of an enclosed building. Um, but in the code, outdoor dining is defined as dining on sidewalks and other elements of the public right of way. And in this case, uh, a, a restaurant is a permitted use in the C1 zone. Outdoor dining requires a CUP. The question is, is there outdoor dining as defined by the code? One of the requests in this? And the related, uh, question then is, is a CUP required? And so that's something we'll come back to, but I think we need to be prepared to discuss it.
And, uh, Chair Quillsey, I will note on the point of whether the CUP is required, uh, our code is a permissive zoning code. And so anything, everything is prohibited unless expressly allowed. And so even not, not, I mean, Lucas, I think will address the issue on outdoor dining, but I would point out that any, uh, the, the, the new use, anything that under the, because of the permissive zoning and that's section 10 dash two, three, oh, three, I believe, um, we'd still require a CUP, so.
Because, okay, I, and Luke, as I say, Lucas and I have discussed this at some length. I, I would contend there's three kinds of dining here. There's dining inside a building on private property. There's dining outside a building on private property. And there's dining in the public right of way or the sidewalk. And the request here is for the first two types. But what you're saying, Nikhil, is because the code is silent on dining on private property outside a building, that, that is prohibited unless otherwise allowed by the commission?
Um, yes, it's, well, it's un, unless otherwise allowed by a conditional use permit because, um, that's how our code operates is that only it's, uh, only expressly permitted uses are allowed. And so a, a use that's not, that hasn't been, um, that's not specifically addressed in the code is, is not unless approved by permit.
Okay. And, and restaurant dining is expressly defined as dining inside an enclosed structure?
Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Lucas, but I believe we don't actually have a definition for restaurant cafe or restaurant.
We do not. Outdoor dining is expressly identified as Chair Quillsey had, had mentioned. Um, if we want to get into that, this, that's, it's kind of a deeper dive in terms of the discussion. I'd rather get to the rest of the presentation and go through that. I think there is, there is certainly, um, a lot to digest and, and, and to go through regarding that we could be here. I'd rather, I'd rather save that for the discussion after we've had some, some input from the, um, from the.
Yep.
Oh, but, and just one clear, so in terms of the parking requirement for the outdoor dining, do we, do you know when that came into effect? I mean, it's just background, I guess I'm asking about.
Um, I think it's actually 2004 when that, when that major code revision, um, let me just look on, online here real quick.
So, okay, so we're a little unclear on what exactly is outdoor dining, but nevertheless, we're saying that the dining in the front and the back of the building that's outs, that's exterior, whatever it is, whatever category it falls into, it's not requiring parking.
Outside the building, but on private property appears not to require any additional parking. That's something I think the commission needs to come back to in the future.
I, I totally agree. Yeah.
It's that combination that we were just talking, that you were just mentioning in terms of the parking was a part of that major code rewrite in 2004.
It's ordinance, uh, seven, seven, one, and that's in section 10 dash two, one, four, oh, six, uh, table three, six.
Yep.
Hey Lucas, can I ask a question? Since this is my first design review, what's kind of the, the goal for this first conversation? Is this going to come back through another review? Um, or how deep are we going to dive into, to all the little details on this tonight?
Excellent question. This is, this is meant to be design review, meaning, um, we're looking at a site plan. We're looking at some fairly preliminary floor plan, um, in terms of how it operates. And then elevations, the design of the exterior of the building. That's landscaping here. And I'm sorry, that's, that's true. I was about to. And landscaping as well. So, and lighting. So that's, that's why there's tibly lighting that's identified with things as well.
But Jake, the, uh, the, the purpose of, of this issue on tonight's agenda is for the commission to decide, do we grant a permit, a design review permit and a CUP? And allow the applicant to move forward with the construction project, or do we not?
And that's just design base, right? I mean, it's going to come back through the planning's laps for all the rest of the plans, correct? Structural, electrical, plumbing, that type of stuff, or?
No.
Correct, but not before this body. That is going to be handled at the.
That's a staff function, right?
So, okay, so clar, clarify what the conditional use permit is for. It's for a change. It's for, it's for a restaurant, but I didn't think we did require a CUP for restaurants. It's for the change?
It's not, it's not for having the restaurant. That's permitted.
The, the design review, uh, permit that we're looking at here is for the exterior changes and the work being done to the building, the conditional use permit, which will, I'm, I'm fully open to having a discussion regarding that once we've heard from the applicant. The conditional use permit is for both of the outdoor, um, dining areas. And as, as Chair Quillsey had, had just mentioned, there is a definition within our code currently that, uh, defines what outdoor dining is, which identifies it within the fuller variety.
Oh, okay. So, so, uh, and as, uh, the attorney said, so because uh, exterior dining, not in a public right of way, is not expressly allowed. That's why we're considering it as a CUP. Okay. All right.
Yes.
Okay. I close the circle on that. I get it.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions for staff? If not.
Oh, sorry. One, one final question. As you were looking at, did, um, Lucas, were you, did you look at the, um, that intersection of Park and, um, Ojai Avenue or that crosswalk is, obviously you're going to have quite a few folks walking across the street. Um, just from a safety standpoint, was that looked at?
Yeah. So I had, I actually had a conversation with our, um, Public Works Director Greg, uh, Grant. And there is actually a signal there, a crosswalk signal that's at, is that the corner? I, I was, I was thinking it was that part?
It's on the west side of Park.
Some part.
Yeah. So there, there is one because that, that was one of the concerns we had early on when we were looking at, at the, uh, at the reciprocal parking being across the street.
Right.
Wondering how those, those individuals are going to get safely from, from the south side of Ojai Avenue to the north side of Ojai Avenue. So there is a, there's a protected, um, area for those, for those pedestrians to cross.
Now there, I, I know there's a crosswalk, but you said there's a, it's lit?
It is, it has those rapid rectangular flashing beacons.
All right, all right. Okay.
Like you have at the, uh, at the library.
Yep.
At Kenyatta and at Spring Oaks.
Several intersections that we have along Ojai Avenue.
Okay.
Yep. My wife and I cross Ojai Avenue there in our walks about the city a lot. It's very effective. The traffic really takes note with those flashing beacons.
Yeah, it's a very busy intersection, that, that little spot. Mm-hmm.
Okay, absent any other questions for staff, uh, let's hear from the applicant. I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Oatway, are you acting for the applicant? Are you acting for the owner tonight?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I, uh, I'm, I really don't have, uh, a lot to add. I, the, the main thing that's occurring here is, uh, a timeframe for, uh, if there were any discussions or necessities for review beyond this night, uh, stopping us from going ahead and, and, uh, finishing the process of going in for a plan check into building and safety. Uh, it would seriously, uh, scuttle the entire project, which we've been involved with over 12 months now. And, uh, but I, 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 I'm open for any questions from the planning commission that they want to ask about our, why we came up with what we come up with. I think the outdoor dining is an interesting discussion specifically because of the, the COVID operation that we've got going now, where it's basically the, the only place that we, a restaurant can operate on their property. Uh, you know, it's, uh, it's the one thing they can do to have people. But what, one of the main reasons for putting people like we have 12, uh, opportunities for 12 people to be dining off the sidewalk on the private property in the front of the building was just to add to the life of the avenue. Uh, I mean, you've seen it, uh, occur at the old Ojai dry cleaning place and, and, uh, it's a, um, it's just an, an opportunity to, uh, create some more life. And the whole reason for Jay wanting to come closer into town was to, uh, uh, increase actually the pedestrian flow and the life of, of our principal avenue, even though it's a state highway. You know, it's really the center of town. But I, I'm interested in any, any questions that, uh, that, uh, that the commissioners have about what we're, what we're doing.
Yeah. Chair Quillsey, did, did we, did you, uh, open, uh, uh, the public hearing?
Not yet. We're still hearing from the applicant at this point.
Got it.
And I, I, I'm presuming that the arborist and the landscape architect are part and parcel with the applicant. And I expected to hear from potentially all three prior to opening the public hearing. Is that appropriate?
That's fine.
Is Michael Inaba in the, uh?
I see his name on a square in the gallery.
I don't see him here though. Oh, there's.
I'm here, guys.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Mike.
Hello, everybody.
Okay.
Okay. I, I have a couple of questions, but I've heard my colleagues on the commission to ask questions of Mr. Oatway first, perhaps. Or, or what would, what would be better here, Nikhil? Should we hear from Mr. Oatway and then Mr. Naba and, and then, um, temporarily not Commissioner Nolan? Um, and then, and then begin questions of all of them, if they exist?
It's, uh, it's your preference, um, as to how you want to do this.
Okay. I think probably that would be better in that we will be able to see a picture of the entire ask and then question the askers. Mr. Oatway, are you done with, with what you wanted to say before you are questioned?
Yeah, I'm right. I'm open to the questions now.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, let's, let's, uh, let's, let's be polite here and let's take on the landscape architect first. They will get back to the arborist. Um, can you unmute Kathy Nolan, please? And tell us if there's something that you want to add to the discussion here before there are questions, Kathy.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Um, yeah, thank you, uh, for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, well, I'm really excited about this project and what they're doing. And I wanted to say that, um, the landscape area is very minimal. But what we are doing is, um, trying to maintain a good percent of the existing, uh, especially the trees. There is one, uh, tree in the front that will come out and be mitigated. And I'll let the arborist, um, Michael Naba go into that a little bit more. But if you look on your plans, we do have a mitigation table there showing what our replacement value is in the specified tree. Um, we are attempting in our very limited landscape area to keep all the water on site. So in the front, um, the street side, under the, the actual dining deck, we have a bioswale then going into our rain garden. And we will be collecting water, um, off the scuppers, um, and with drains in the back. And then, um, doing kind of a release system into the existing landscape. Uh, once again, to try to keep it all on site. A last ditch effort, if we had a deluge, we would have, um, Uh, once again, to try to keep it all on site. A last ditch effort, if we had a deluge, we would have, um, uh, a drain, like a pop-up drain where the water would essentially go out to the parking lot. But that, we will have all the cals for that when we go into the, um, assuming we get approval, but before we do our construction documents. Um, the plant material we're keeping in, uh, in line with the, um, the state water requirements for landscape, so we've done some preliminary work on that. And then, of course, we will have all the calculations on our final plans. Um, but that's generally, um, the comments that I had to make. Also, we have lighting. Uh, everything will be, um, low voltage LED for energy efficiency, and then, of course, shrouded. And the architect is actually taking care of the, of the tivoli lights, but all the other landscape lighting um, would be on the landscape architect plans. And, um, I guess we'll go through the, you know, talk to the arborist, then I'm opening it up for questions, or I could answer any questions now.
Yeah, I know this is, this is kinda late in the game here. Kathy, do you want me to, um, share my screen and show the, the plans so that we can, if there's points that you wanted to, to talk through? I know the same thing is probably potentially true.
The landscaping plan would be helpful to share.
Sure, you could put it up and then I could, um, you know, explain basically what I talked about, but I'll do it pretty quickly and show where those items are, if that would help.
Can you see my screen?
Yeah, I can see your screen, yeah. You just need to scroll through, yeah, you're doing that, so. Quite a few sheets. There we go. Um, yeah, so I think this plan should be sufficient. Um, if you, it might be because I'm on a small laptop. Let me see if I can scroll. Yeah, if you could scroll down towards the street, yeah, towards Ojai Avenue, that'd be great. So, um, in the front adjacent to the sidewalk, there's a hatched area. That's where the bioswale will be in the front. And it actually drains over to the east side of the front entry steps, and that's where our rain garden is going to be located. And we've also have a replacement tree there, which will provide shade, but will also act as a street tree. Um, and then in the back, where it's actually, our plans say that it's a composite deck, it's going to be a um, concrete patio, which is reflected on the architect's plan, so I just wanted to be clear about that. That's the back dining area. That area will have, um, drains as well as drains in the planders because it's enclosed. Um, and then that water is going to be taken out to the west side, and if you look, um, on the west upper side, you can see a linear line of similar-looking plant material. There's hedging in there. That's where we're gonna be draining out the water. It's actually going up a little uphill, but we're gonna be able to I believe you drop our drain line, a perforated drain pipe, similar to like a French drain to release the excess water. Um, and let's see, what else can I say here? Um, well, we've provided, you know, screening in the back patio for privacy, and the architect has placed a fountain, um, within that back patio. It's a little hard to see on the, on the screen here, but part of the reason is for ambiance, of course, but also for white sound. There is, um, a large, larger cooling unit at the property to the west, which is Westridge Market, which kind of goes off and on. So we will have that white sound, um, from a fountain in that area. And I will say the planting has a little bit of an Asian flair to it, but once again, it's all going to be, um, water efficient. The irrigation will be a drip system, which will be efficient, um, on a smart controller. And, um, I think that's it, and unless anyone has any questions, we also have bicycle parking too, which I know is required, but I'm a big proponent of, and that's located on the east side, right there where the cursor is.
Kathy? Yeah. Uh, what, so what is the tree? So the number two, um, tree is going to be replaced, but what, and what exactly, I can't, I just couldn't find out, couldn't figure out what was, what was replacing it, what type of tree?
So on the, the page prior to this is our site plan on the title sheet. There's an existing oak, a coastlive oak that is there and was planted by a previous owner. And it was pruned incorrectly, and, and our arborist, Mike Inaba, can actually uh, go into that in a little bit more detail. But the structure, you know, is not, um, the best because it was pruned incorrectly. I also wanted to say that there's a, um, a beautiful coastlive oak on the west side in the parking lot area. That tree will remain and will be protected during construction, and of course, you know, um, we've designed around it to maintain it. And there's also a coastlive oak on the bottom, um, that would be the southwest side, but it's actually on the neighbor's property. But it's within, you know, about a foot or so of the property line. And, um, uh, Mr. Oatway and the owners have contacted the neighboring property, and we included that tree in the arborist's report to do our due diligence. So that tree will also be protected during construction and considered as far as the plant material and the, uh, construction that's going on, so they'll be maintained. And then the, the replacement tree that I spoke about in the front where the, the oak that was pruned improperly. Right now, I'm looking at doing, um, a London plane tree, and if you note on the plans, I had a notation, um, about the shot hole bore, uh, which was discovered months ago in Ojai. Um, but I've been following that closely, and I do believe we can still use the tree. It's actually listed in the community forest management plan, and if you look at some of the adjacent properties in downtown Ojai, it's a similar tree that works well as a street tree in an urban context. So for the moment, we, I believe that'll still be the species unless, uh, I confer with the arborists and we decide to switch it out, but it looks positive at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay, Kathy, are, are you finished with your part of the presentation?
Yes, unless there's any other questions.
Okay, well, let's, let's move on and, and have, have Mike Inaba talk to us about the trees, because I have questions, I think, for all three of you when we get done. Mike?
Yes, hello, I'm here.
What would you like to tell the commission about what you've done as the arborist and what you recommend?
Well, I wanted to confirm, I wanted to thank you first, uh, everyone, for having me, uh, participate here. And I wanted to thank James for the really great execution of his Zoom meeting. And I wanted to confirm, this is a conceptual design review, is that right?
No, this is a design review. This is, uh, if we say yes tonight, then the construction goes forward.
Okay, very good, very good. All right, um, the, the trees on this property, we have, uh, two coastlive oaks, um, that Kathy described well. And we have the neighbor's tree that is mostly on this, uh, on this side. It will be pruning to, to, uh, to manage that through construction. The, the idea of coastlive oak, you know, along the street front, um, that's been complicated in the past. We've had a couple installations and then some historical decisions to, to opt for something else so that we can balance the needs of, uh, business frontage, visibility, um, traffic safety and so forth. There, there are a lot of, um, a lot of factors to juggle in that decision. When we look at just taking, you know, fifty feet, sixty, maybe seventy feet off of the highway, uh, the oak tree in the back has grown normally. It doesn't have to be cropped low. And so when, when Kathy was speaking to the pruning that occurred for the tree that will be removed, well, basically, it was stunted on purpose because there's not adequate room without turning it into a big notch. Um, and we know that that's not the right way for a coastlive oak to look. It really complicates management. And, uh, it decreases the benefits, but it increases the maintenance. So moving away from what was ultimately a poor selection for the location, it gives us the ability to choose something that's a better species of tree for the location. And that, that really helps, uh, in so many different ways. So I think Kathy covered most of the, the conceptual design considerations, and we had some, um, discussions along the way and came up with some good solutions, and I think that this is a really, uh, a really solid presentation. So I, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Okay, commissioners, we have, uh, Mr. Oatway, Nolan, and Mr. Inaba available for your questions. Who'd like to start?
Well, I'll start.
Good.
Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm actually, uh, very pleased with what, with what's being presented, and, um, so my questions are just to make sure I understand the, um, all the details. Um, so what's the, is the tivoli light, the, I know, I, I know in the, um, appendix or the, all the details on the materials, there was, there is a light bulb that you're using the Laura, but I, um, what is the size of that bulb?
Oh, wow, which bulb are you talking about? Are you talking about the tivoli light?
Yeah, that just, I mean, is it, uh, yeah, yeah, I, I just wondered, um, because it doesn't really call it, maybe it does. Anyway, I just, I, I, it's just, uh, I'm not asking for the, you know, the measurement to the eighth of an inch or a sixteenth of an inch, just generally, is it, is it, is it like the tivoli lights that we see at, um, um, oh, gosh.
At the roti, uh?
Roti, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's like that.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Um, I'm pleased to see that you're using infrared wall-mounted heaters, is that correct, instead of gas or propane?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, and, um, um, are you, are you building the trolley? The trolley bench, or is that just, there's just a?
That's, that's something that we wanna provide, uh, for the trolley stop. We just think it's, uh, it's kind of a unique element of this particular property, that you'd have people who decide to take the trolley to go out to dinner and get their sushi. Uh, and so we're, we're looking at if we have to just purchase one, or actually, we were thinking if we were going to be in the, in the category of having to provide something artistic, we were gonna have somebody make a sculpture out of it. But it'll just be a, it'll just be probably a fairly typical, uh, you know, park bench, but, but bolted, you know, to a concrete slab.
Okay, so you are planning to provide a park bench, and it, I mean, that's been done, but benches as an art project have been done elsewhere, so, so you're saying that's a possibility, might be a nice
Possibility, hasn't, the decision hasn't been made.
And that would have to go through the Arts Commission and all that, so, okay, and, um, let's see, I don't think, I think that's it.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, quick question. Um, I noticed that you're gonna put, um, African fern pine around the perimeter of the property. And I, I guess my question is, uh, how tall is that going to get, and is there, is there limitations on how tall that can go?
It actually grows very tall, but what I typically do in the construction documents or the landscape documentation package will specify the height limit, so it'll, like, there'll be maintenance notes included.
Okay.
And, um, part of the reason we're using it is to do a little bit of screening from the neighboring property, or neighboring properties, I should say, but the height will be limited.
Okay, cool.
A good question, because it does get really tall if you don't
Yeah, it does. And then another question on the bamboo, um, I noticed that you're gonna have, uh, the golden goddess bamboo kind of adjacent to the Asian fusion property. Um, I know that bamboo can get pretty, uh, out of control if it's not, if it's not, uh, taken care of properly. Do you have, um, are you gonna plant it within like a container, or is it gonna be kind of free-form, or?
So the go, yeah, I'm, great question. The golden goddess is a clumping bamboo rather than a running bamboo.
Okay.
So it doesn't, you know, the clumps can expand some up, but it doesn't run and get away, so to speak.
Right.
And it's also a shorter, it's about the six foot to eight foot in height maximum, so it's a shorter, smaller bamboo, and it's clumping.
Okay, cool. And then one final thing, I noticed in the very front, and as you drive into the parking lot, on the right side between Asian fusion and the property, there's, um, dwarf Yopon Holly, it looks like?
Yes.
And I didn't see a picture of it, so I was just curious, is that what's already there? Or is that?
You know, I'm not sure what happened, but I, you're right, because I looked at my package, like, wow, it disappeared. But it, you know, um, there is, I believe it's Westringia that is already there. Um, and if you'll notice, the property line kind of goes right through the planter.
It does.
So we'll probably end up talking to the adjacent property owner, and, you know, of course, if they wanna leave their part in the front, we will.
Right.
Uh, but it's similar, um, looking to, I, I will, if I had to compare it to something, a small, uh, darker kind of evergreen-colored, evergreen-green, uh, kind of a boxwood type, but it isn't a boxwood.
Okay.
Helps you?
Yeah, that does.
I'm sorry about the picture not being on there.
Oh, that, that's okay, and as far as the height goes, it's gonna be, I'm assuming, shorter?
The height, yes, it's the maximum growth of three feet.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and it can be kept shorter, but, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
And that's bamboo, is that right?
What was that?
And that's the bamboo, the three feet?
No, he's talking about the, um, the Ilex, uh, vomitoria, great name.
Yeah, I love that.
Yopon Holly. Um,
Near that one.
This one is alongside the driveway.
Yeah.
On either side, maximum three-foot height, and the bamboo is about six-foot height, and it's clumping, not running.
Okay.
It's not a large bamboo, it's got finer combs or stalks.
Okay, and the African fern pine you're limiting to?
I will specify that on the, uh, in the landscape documentation package, and we always include a maintenance, um, sheet, which is required with the M Wilo, and, um, I'll have a notation there about maintaining the height on what.
Okay, so that becomes part of the, um, does that, does that get stamped as part of the approved designer?
Yeah, so the landscape plans also are, they're submitted with the entire package with the architectural, if there's structural or
Okay.
Um, any other engineering, and it does get, um, reviewed.
Can I, can I ask about the lighting?
Please, go ahead, Jake.
Um, so, so I noticed one of the ballards is getting removed to add additional parking spaces. And I was wondering if, if maybe Lucas or somebody else in the commission knows if in parking lots of restaurants, we have a minimum, um, photometric report of lumens in the parking lot for the egress, for the, the people eating there to get to their car safely. Um, I only ask because a lot of the landscape lights are, are wall washing to the outside, but there's no light coming to the inside of the parking um, lot, so that was just something that stuck out to me.
Who could address that, would that be?
Nick, do you wanna answer that, or do you want me to answer it? About the ball?
The lighting on the part of the?
In, in the parking lot, there's existing ballards, but because we had to alter one, a couple of the parking spaces, uh, we've relocated the other ones onto the, uh, west side under the outer edge of the, well, our, excuse me, the outer edge of the parking area near the bikes and the compact car space. So we're actually, Nick, uh, you might ask this, but as far as I know, those aren't gonna be changed out. They're the exact ones that had been approved on a previous project.
Are you talking about the number of, of parking spaces?
No, 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 his concern was about the lumens, um, and the photometrics for the, uh, ball
Amount of lighting, the amount of
Yeah, to make sure that it was adequate, and if, if there was a requirement, and I, all I mentioned was is that we're keeping the same And I, all I mentioned was, is that we're keeping the same lighting except for that we had to move and relocate two of the ballards.
But we are, we are losing one though, one is being deleted. So we, we are, we are decreasing our lumen output on that left side.
But we aren't, we aren't in, we're decreasing the actual amount of parking on the, on the west side as well, because that's how we got the room to actually have a commercial kitchen and an outdoor eating area at the back. So well, there's one less space actually being lit and, and there's one less baller, that's true.
Yeah, I guess the intent of my question was just to ask somebody that might know if we have a policy as far as, um, non-residential use parking lots. If we have a ma, a minimum photometric report requirement to make sure that customers aren't walking to their car in the dark where they might trip, they might fall. And, you know, it might be a liability of the owners. So that was my only, uh, my only question about that is the safety of, uh,
I don't know about any, any actual, uh, photometric, as you call it, you know, but I only know that there'll be a lot more light than there ever has been in that back area, just from the lighting that we're going to have for the outdoor eating, for instance, while the, while the business is, is in operation. So the, the reality of moving the spaces, we actually got an extra space on the east side and one less space on the west side. And that, in my, in my opinion, the lighting will actually be more adequate than it was before. Uh, but as far as actual photometrics, no, I know, I don't know anything about, about that.
Yeah, hard to tell with an office building, you don't have a lot of parking and walking in the parking lot after dark, the way you would expect with a restaurant. So certainly something for the planning staff to look at as, as we move forward. Um, more questions?
I do have one more, one more question. Um, as far as the water impacts go with irrigation, I mean, obviously there's gonna be a lot of, um, shrubs and trees that are being planted, is the most of that coming from the reclaimed water?
No, well, let's put it this way, we are capturing the water off of the roof and the patios and that's going to be redirected back in the, into the landscape. So essentially, you know, that's going to help cut down on the actual water use that would be coming, you know, from the, uh, casitas, those, which is our water money. Yeah, and then everything will be, um, uh, drip irrigation, uh, you know, efficient with the smart controller, uh, rain gauge.
Right.
Et cetera. For efficiency.
And the African fern pines, are they, um, do they require a lot of water or they?
So actually, that's interesting you said, and I have a note on my plan. If you go to the wool calls, which is the place where you get your plant factors, in other words, how much water, a certain plant's gonna be used in a certain area. In our area, it says medium, but I will say this, uh, based on my experience and even some, a project that I did up here that was in the county, and I had to go through the planning department there. Um, I was able to demonstrate that it's actually a low water use plant material in our area.
Good.
And I'll put that notation on there.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I definitely, everything will be, well, I will say this, I always try to come in way under the, um, allotted amount of gallons we will be provided based on the calculations, the state calculations, I do, I always try to come way under. I think it's good just for water efficiency, but you know, if you ever have to make some changes, you've got a little leeway. But, uh,
Good.
Trying to minimize the use.
No, that's awesome, I'm glad that was.
Yeah, good question, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Kathy or Jake, you have any more questions at this point?
Um, the only thing that I saw when I visited today was might affect the, the design would be where the main, existing main panel is right now, it's gonna turn into a serving window. Um, so that panel's probably gonna have to be relocated, which will have to be approved by Edison. So maybe just make a note on the plan saying, you know, relocate panel on the plans just because it's gonna have to move regardless and it might affect where Edison allows you to put that panel.
Yeah, it'll be on.
They dictate where that goes.
It'd wind up on the inside of the building otherwise.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I have a couple of questions. The first one, uh, Nick, you, you mentioned you have one less parking space on the west side of the parking lot and one more on the east side. The one more is the one on the plan that is numbered 11. And I, and it's, it's the one that is arguably most under the tree. And in fact, uh, at the moment, right where that parking space would be, there is a metal post sunk in concrete. And I'm, I'm wondering why you would choose to have an additional parking space under the tree if, if the owner is already doing a shared parking arrangement with the American Legion across the street? Why not just have five spaces over there instead of four? And not further compact the ground, let's say, under the drip line of that existing oak tree?
Well, we didn't have, uh, an agreement with, uh, when we were originally doing the site plan, we didn't have, uh, an agreement or even know that we could do anything with the American Legion property across the street. That was something that just happened in this last summer, in the last couple of months. We were able to get that going. So I, what I was trying to do with the site plan was at least provide the same parking spaces that we originally had.
I see.
And how, how was I gonna get space, uh, by adding on to this building? Enough space to have a commercial kitchen and also have outdoor. I don't.
I'd, I'd like to bring the question up again when, when we get to deliberations. Uh, because I'd really like to see as little parking under a tree as, as we can manage. Um, and my feeling is that parking space number 11 would just exacerbate the problems that that tree might have. I had the same problem doing a remodel on my house and I had contractor pickups in my side yard and it's now concrete from having so many trucks for so many days, driving back and forth over what used to be a lawn. Uh, okay.
Uh, second. Just a follow-up question. That's a very good point, Steve, I really appreciate that, that you noticed that. Um, so, um, Nick, do you think the applicant would be amenable to increasing to five spaces? I mean, it might mean a little bit more in space, parking space rent or whatever the agreement entails.
Well, I just asked them.
Mr. Han, are you there?
Uh, he's probably, uh, putting. He was there at the beginning, but I think he gave up.
Yeah.
We are a talkative crew. Uh, yes, Kathy, Nick, Nolan.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a comment, I, Steve and Kathy, I think that's an excellent suggestion. And if the owner and the, um, American Legion property owner are amenable to, to moving that space, I think number one, that would be the ideal, um, thing to do. If not, uh, Nick, I, I know you and I had discussed, you know, even doing like a permeable, uh, ma- material in that one parking space or part of it. Um, if, if needed, as an alternative, being maybe second best, but.
Just walking the property today, it looked to me like that steel post buried in concrete was put there specifically to protect the tree. And it looks from the plans like you're expecting to take it out. Okay, um, I do have a question for Mr. Anaba. If you're still there, sir?
I am.
Okay. Um, uh, again, walking the property today, I looked at that tree number three, which is not much mentioned. Um, it's marginally mentioned, but not much mentioned in either the, the plans or in the arborist report. But at the moment, if there's going to be a ramp that goes up to a serving window or an entrance, um, anyone who is taller than about three and a half feet is gonna be running into oak branches. Do you, do you have a plan for appropriately pruning that tree? So that in fact, the access to the building that's on the plan can actually be used? And if so, what's the plan there?
That is something that I discussed with the owner and with, uh, Nick Oatway. And the tree will require pruning, undoubtedly. Um, it is.
It's gonna go up to eight feet.
That's right, that's right. So it's, it's a compromise. Again, um, if you look down Ojai Avenue, you'll see that, uh, while we, we initially had some coast live oak out there in the late 1800s, early 1900s, successively, we've learned that coast live oak is a difficult species where you have storefrontages, where you have vehicle, um, line of sight and so forth. That, if you, if you recall visiting the site, that oak tree is basically sheared off right along the property line, even though the trunk is located at Westridge, they have to have delivery, you know, big delivery trucks, 18-wheelers, um, back into that side slot. And it basically shears the side of this oak tree nice and plain. So there's really, there's inadequate space, but it's not, um, the property of, uh, Mr. Han to decide whether it stays or goes. Um, because we have to balance competing priorities, there are ways to prune that to provide, um, pedestrian clearance. It's just trying to keep what wants to be a tree the size of the oak in the back of the property in the front where there's inadequate space. It would be wonderful if there was, um, a way to change that tree out for something that would be a little bit more reasonable in the small amount of space that's there. But there's definitely a way to control that tree. Um, you might recall, uh, I believe we, we once spoke about pruning of oaks and how there is a perception, there's no way you can prune an oak tree. Well, this, uh, this subject, coast live oak, the one side is flat because of the big trucks. And, uh, as an example, I point folks to the library where because of, um, repeated shearing, we have three different species of oak that are maintained as hedges about four and a half feet high and about 24 inches deep. And they're, they're meant to be trees, but they're functioning as hedges. So coast live oak is very plastic, it will do almost anything you ask. It's just a matter of the right timing, the right, uh, what we call dosage in pruning. Um, if you know how to do it, it's very, it's very easily done, it just takes time.
Okay, but you can, you, this, this tree that we're, tree number three that we're talking about, you're saying the west side of the tree is already kind of battered by all the big trucks? I'll have another question related to that. Um, but the east side of the tree, you don't see a problem pruning it up to something like eight feet off the ground? So that that ramp up, access to the, to the restaurant is, is, um, okay? It's not gonna make the tree, uh, too stressed and it's not gonna look too strange?
Well, it will look unusual, but, uh, it's, it's a, it's a matter of balancing priorities. And, uh, if we have, you know, this is not our tree to decide its fate. This tree belongs, belongs to Westridge or it belongs to Public Works as part, or possibly Caltrans as a street tree. I don't know what the width of the easement is there. But it's definitely not on the property.
Steve?
The easement runs to the, the inner edge of the sidewalk, Lucas, is that about right? Okay. All right.
Correct. It belongs to Westridge.
Yeah, it's Westridge.
Yes, it's definitely on Westridge property, yes.
I'm quite willing, I've had very brief conversation with Dave West. Uh, but I'm, I, I'd like, I obviously will have another conversation or two relative to that tree and how it's to be dealt with, whether, whether we have to prune it or he, whether he wants us to do, you know, he, he knows that we have to do something to it. I've, I've shown him the plan of what we would like to do.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Um, I, you know, I understand when they're, when it's the wrong tree in the wrong place. And, um, I do, I have, I have a live oak tree in my backyard, so I, I did, did really, the neighbor doesn't like it, so it's been sheared on one side and it's just hanging. It's, I mean, it's actually thriving, it's, uh, it is a kind of amazing. But, um, I, I would just like to throw out, uh, a possible, another, uh, alternative solution. Um, you know, if it's better to remove these two live oak trees, yeah, I would be, I mean, I think a possible solution might be to ask the applicant to, uh, work with Ojai Trees, um, to plant, uh, two replacement tree, a live oak tree somewhere in town, the cost would be minimal. Uh, they charge generally about a hundred dollars to, um, plant with volunteer, volunteer work. Um, tree, I, I mean, you know, a lot of cities would make you replace them at a ratio of one to three minimum. Um, so the exact ratio might be under discussion, but would you be? Would you, I'm, I'm just throwing that out as a solution. And I wonder how you, uh, think about that.
You talking to me?
Uh, any of the applicant people.
Well, it's certainly something, uh, it's a good idea, actually. I, I, I think, uh, the tree people would do a much better job than the poor tree that we're dealing with. Uh, you know, so, Michael, what do you think?
I actually, um, I really, I, I, I want to say thank you, that's, I think it's a great idea. And I know that, um, the recent events and the, you know, what we're looking at as a forecast for TreeCover in Ojai, we would really do well to, um, and I know this is planning, uh, commission, it's not, uh, the whole, uh, city, uh, present. But if we could support, replacing the older veteran valley oak trees that we're starting to lose, that would be fantastic. That would be something really worth doing. And the opportunity is here, i- it's something that, um, that we need to think of transitioning, uh, for, just on one, on one level, to diversify the age class, uh, distribution. So we have more young trees, more middle-aged trees and maybe a few less of the older trees. Uh, nature's gonna take care of the last one for us. We have some older trees that just aren't gonna make it, uh, but we can plan ahead so that the locations that they occupy in the city, those can, um, be reinvigorated. We can, we can have a vision for the future. And rather than simply pave over the spot where there was a tree, ensure that a tree goes back in. I think that would be excellent.
So you're, are you suggesting that it would be even a better, uh, uh, replacement, um, value to, if we, if those were taken out, the two were taken out to replace them somewhere in the city with the valley oak? Is that what you're saying? Even, even a better value than replacing them with live oak?
Um, yes, uh, for a couple of reasons. But when you look at a mature valley oak, the tree can be 60 plus feet tall. Uh, it's deciduous, so the houses underneath get sunshine in the winter months. And it's, it is, um, a species that is kind of dwindling a bit uh, because most of our population are older trees, um, in that eight, eighty to a hundred and fifty or more, uh, age group. And so, um, when we look toward the future, if you plant even a 15. And so um, when we look toward the future, if you plant even a fifteen gallon Valley Oak. It might have a three-quarter inch diameter at planting. In, in fifty to eighty years, that tree can be um. Maybe twenty to thirty of the, of the trees that we're talking about. And you carry that, that canopy provides all the ecosystem services of pollution absorption, rainwater, um. Uh, stormwater runoff control. Um, it provides oxygen, it sequesters carbon. Um, it improves aesthetics, it slows people down, it calms people down. Uh, it really uh, i- improves property values. There are all these benefits of big, healthy trees. Um.
Yeah, I agree. And um. I mean, I, I don't know what the numbers are, but I, they are, are they becoming? I mean, I guess there's no label for endangered tree, uh, Valley Oak trees, but I think that is the case that we are really. Losing um, this beautiful original tree in the valley.
I agree and um, I don't mean to um, to sound too pedantic about it. But we almost take it for granted in Ojai that we have Valley Oaks. Los Angeles doesn't have them, not anymore. And, and it is, it is a special character of the city of Ojai. That people who arrive here from all over the world really. And they see the trees, the trees are sometimes one of the first impressions and one of the most lasting impressions people take. When you, you know, you're traveling. Anywhere and you say, oh, I live in Ojai. Oh, I've been to Ojai, those trees, right? And so um, I think that we're in a position now of, of charting a future that will accommodate. Um, increased housing density. You know, that's a new state law. We're gonna have more granny flats. More, uh, try to have more affordable housing. Uh, we have a lot of older ailing trees. And visioning that future where we're actively replacing trees, not overplanting. But getting uh, the right trees in the right spots. That really helps to ensure that Ojai is still as beautiful in the future as it is now.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to continue with a couple more questions and this is again from Mr. Naba. I noticed in the Arborist report, the discussion. Of tree number two, the one that's proposed for removal at the moment that's in front of the building. Um. I don't, I don't recall a big discussion about the poor past pruning, let's call it. Um, but it did mention interference with the power lines or cable TV lines. On the pole line that runs right along the street. And I'm wondering, isn't that the same problem that tree number three has? Because it's, this, I think it's the same kind of tree. I think it's in roughly the same position relative to the street. And if anything, it might be a little bigger than the tree number two that you're proposing to remove. Um, a- and along that line, I'd like to ask Lucas why we didn't, why we don't have a tree permit. As part of this since we're clearly proposing to remove a tr- an oak. That is more than four inches in diameter. I think it is at least. I didn't tape it. Uh, but first with Mr. Naba, what do you think? Is, is tree number three there on the Westridge property as much of a danger as tree number two is? In terms of coverage or interference with the power lines or any of the rest of that?
Well, thank you, Mr. Quilisi. Um, I wouldn't use the word danger. I would uh, go back to uh, what Commissioner Lottis said about the wrong tree and the wrong place. We use that expression, the right tree in the right place all the time. And the um, the gist of it is that. Trees require maintenance and the less maintenance they need. Uh, and the more benefits they provide, well, that, the better it works out for people. Um, nobody likes to spend the money or have the inconvenience of the noise and the dust of, of doing the actual tree work. So coastal live oak, even going to the Community Forest Management Plan. Uh, coastal live oak was not selected as a great tree right along uh, the downtown corridor. For these reasons, if you have overhead lines, you have to, if it's a data line, it's not as big of a deal. But once you get up to the um. The electrical distribution grid. Um, Edison is now being very aggressive. They've gone from a six-foot annual clearance to ten-foot. Just to reduce the fire risk. And what happens with coastal live oak in that case, and you can see this driving out of town as you approach Loma. You know, um, heading over there toward the nursery, say. Um, for vehicular clearance, the lower limbs are removed. Uh, they can't conflict with traffic, obviously. Um, everybody driving wants to have a clear line of sight. And then once they get up to the trees, then they're notched a way to keep them out of the power lines. And so you create the form of a coastal live oak that grows up and leaning with an exposed trunk. And like the tree down near Loma, now after decades of investment is what it boils down to. Probably forty, fifty years of investment, that tree is now declining due to sunburn. And basically conflicting with its intended use. It's being asked to do something it's not meant to do. And so in the future, it would make a lot of sense to put a tree there that doesn't end up. Um, with a foreshortened lifespan, with reduced benefits. And, and honestly, um, a pain to maintain. A Caltrans would, would agree, I'm sure that uh. It's, it's a problem if the tree does not fit into its um, designed use. And so as uh, as design people, we really need to think about what the tree is supposed to do, what's its natural form. And realize that um, in this location, those two trees are good examples of, of. Artificially stunting the canopy, creating what landscape people sometimes call lollipops. Because whenever you're near roads, you need that at least six feet clear of trunk. And then you need a small round head, so you're not conflicting with business signage, you're not obstructing line of sight. Um, you have to maintain it compact enough that the branches aren't snapping off due to, you know, their proportions. And if you're under the power lines, there's really not a lot of, of volume for that canopy to grow. So you have to maintain it smaller than normal and it just becomes a maintenance headache where, yes, it will survive. And it still provides benefits, but it doesn't look right and it doesn't, it doesn't have um. It doesn't have the performance of what the species is capable for. So it's really not the best use for that species.
Okay. Um, thank you, thank you. I, I think we all. Are, are much better educated on the trees now and we can do that, talk about it during deliberations. I wanted to ask about the trolley stop seat. I think it's a, it's a nice feature to have this restaurant available at a trolley stop. Um, it is not currently, I believe. But also, a- and correct me if I'm wrong on this, the way that you would get to. This from say downtown or from the inn or from the Oaks if it ever opens again. Uh, is you hop on the trolley and it goes up Signal. Or maybe Montgomery, I'm not sure which, uh, to Grand. And then, and then way down east on Grand someplace before it comes back and proceeds west. On Ojai Avenue. And that's a long run just to get to your trolley stop seat. I'm, I'm not sure that, that that is the best way to do it. I, I just. I don't know what the answer is. Have you, have you talked to the trolley people about having the trolley stop there if you get a restaurant there?
I've, I've talked to the trolley people about the stop that exists. There's a stop there.
There, there is a stop there now?
There is a stop there and there's a sign that says trolley stop, the regular.
I didn't notice it today. Thank you.
And it's uh. It's been there, but it needs help. And I said, is there gonna be any funds to sort of stre- strengthen that trolley stop? And make it a little more permanent. Uh, obviously, it's not used a lot. But uh.
Not probably.
Be, the idea would be able to make it more, more uh, attractive. And, and more usable. And that's a whole issue in the general plan, of course, relative to public transportation and moving people around the town.
Do we have a, um, do we have a standard uh, bus stop bench? Do we have a? Design guidelines for bus stop?
Certainly didn't recall seeing a bench there now.
No, there's no bench there.
Right, okay.
But I, I mean, we, we don't have a, we don't have requirements for a standard bus top, bus stop bench. Okay. Look at the thing now, okay.
Very like by the Oaks, there's a whole enclosure.
You know, in fact, you've got, you've had quite a lot of design related to uh. Uh, that's been done to like the one at the high school on Maricopa Highway and. Different seating and different arrangements for cover overhead. And certainly if we don't go with any tree or any replacement tree. Uh, I'll probably try to uh, bend the uh. Oh, my client into putting a cover over the seat we do, you know, which will be back later.
Uh, Kathy Nolan, please.
Yeah, I just wanna make a quick comment. Three uh, separate times when I was actually out on the sa- site, just gathering information. Um, there were people, one, one time it was just one person, other times more than one. Sitting on the front porch of this, the building at this site, waiting for the trolley.
Ah.
Because there wasn't a bench and it was shadier. So there was a seat, so there, you know, obviously there is a demand or a need. So I, I just wanted to share that, that I actually saw. People sitting there and I actually asked them if they were waiting for the trolley and they said yes.
Trolley stop there actually is used. Yeah, okay.
So they, they needed a bench, obviously, and they were seeking shade. So a combination of the two.
Okay, any more questions for the, for the posse of applicants? Okay, then uh, then I will open the public hearing and ask if there is any member of the public. Who wishes to comment on this agenda item. Have we uh?
There are no attendees. No emails and no attendees.
No atten- okay, okay, very good. Then we will close the public hearing, come back to the commission for deliberation. And I would uh, solicit uh, opinions.
Actually.
Other three of you as to what we should do for this.
And real quick, um, Commissioner, uh, well, uh, Ms. Nolan, you can't comment or during this period.
Right.
Yeah, understood.
You're not deliberating or voting, right?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Jake, you wanna start?
Can I go, can I go next? I'm not, I just.
Sure, sure. Um, John?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think um. In looking at this holistically, um, you know, the concept of it being closer to downtown. Uh, creating more walkable space. Um, I love all that. Um, I'm concerned with the parking on the other side of the street, um, with, you know, the high traffic of folks that are crossing. Ojai Avenue and, and that intersection at Park. I know that it gets really busy through there. And I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful, I, as you said, that they have um, lights. Uh, to help those pedestrians as they cross, but um. I could just see that area getting really uh, tricky, cause it's, it's already difficult to turn left off of Fulton's. Difficult to turn um, left out of the parking lot next to, you know, on that, that over by Park Road area. So it's just, it's kind of, it's, it's just a weird spot. Um, so uh, that's my only concern is the parking, really. I think everything else is great. I love the design. I think it's. It fits within the character of the town. Um, I love the landscaping. I, I love the idea of rainwater collection and reuse and. Um, low water, um, you know, demands. Um, I think you guys have done a really nice job in that. And this is quite frankly, I think a, a great idea for the town in this area, cause um. You know, it'll bring a lot of, uh, I think much needed uh. Traffic to this area and I think it will help all the businesses in the area. So it's good.
Okay, Kathy Lottis?
Um, yeah, I think my concerns are more um. Specifying, being a little more specific about what's included in the approval. Uh, in the, in the uh, conditions. Um, so. Um. You know, I'm looking for a condition on um, the, the off-site parking. So you know exactly what happens um, uh, in terms of marking the spaces. Um, in terms of uh, tracking off-site parking. Over the years. Um, and uh, I mean, I don't even know if we have a file on this kind of stuff. But I think if we were to approve this, we need to establish a uh. Something where we, we can. Somebody's in charge and somebody's, you know, able to know exactly where the off-site spaces are and. How they're supposed to look and uh, and check on them every so often. Um, and have a, have an agreement on file that, that need, you know. If it needs to be updated because there's a change of ownership or something that that happens. Um, and uh, condition, let's see, I. Um, I lo- I love the idea of the trolley bench. Um. I, I'm not sure about the exact bench that's being proposed. That's why I asked about whether there's any. Any design guidelines at all. Um, but I think there needs to be a condition specifying that. Um. Uh, let's see what else. Um, the. If we talk about the trees that allow a tree replacement, um, I think it would be. A great idea to require uh, an oak, oak tree replacement. Um, in conjunction with working with Ojai Trees and that that should appear as a condition of approval. Um. Let's see, what else? I guess. Um. With the lighting, I'm, I'm kind of inclined to maybe add some specific business hours with that. Uh, I think, because I don't know that they're operating, I mean, if they, if they have regular hours of operation that are less than. Staying open till eleven thirty. PM, um. That, uh, that might be added to condition number ten. Anyway, I, I think that there's, there to. For me to be okay with this project, I would wanna have some work. Uh, uh, work on the conditions of approval, some of the conditions of approval. I'm ha- I'm generally happy with the project. Um, I like the bike parking. I think there needs to be a condition that there will be bike parking. Um, so I, I'm just looking for more specificity, specis- specificity in conditions.
Jake, your thoughts?
Yeah, um, sorry for passing earlier. Uh, I actually have like three notes on this project, but I wasn't sure. If tonight was a night to talk about them, but. Well, some, some of mine was more like policies and definitions, um, you know, questioning. Um. How land, low voltage landscape lighting is considered to be dark sky compliant if the lights are facing straight up. Um, or if there's some sort of Sydney ordinance where low voltage landscape lighting are excluded from the dark sky compliance. Um, so I had stuff like that, but it's more of like a general topic, not necessarily that specific to this project. Because I do like the design. Um, I don't have really any other concerns as far as the design. It's just. You know, maybe definitions, verbiage, other like, stuff like that in our municipal codes that we might want to address another time.
Okay, the, the tivoli lights that, that are there, Nick. Um, are they, are they shaded so that the light is directed downward or not?
Oh, absolutely. I have it in the, in the submittal, there, every one of them gets a, a cover. So the light is going directly down on the, on the uh, seat, on the surface of the outdoor. Outdoor eating area. That's in the back, actually. seat on the surface of the outdoor, outdoor eating area. That's in the back, actually.
Okay, and I, I believe that there's residential property directly abutting this parcel on the north side. Is that right?
Back, yes.
Yes, okay. And so all the lights around the parking lot will be directing their light onto the parking lot and not onto adjacent properties?
Yes.
Okay.
So Jake, what did you have? Were there specific lights you were, you're concerned about?
Well, uh, yeah, well, on, on sheet L two, um, we do have like a, a lighting package. And two of the fixtures actually do face upwards that might wall wash backwards towards the walls or up and through the trees or up underneath the bamboo are actually, those are actually designed to face up and give light from the ground upwards. And not saying I have a problem with it because I do it all the time, but, um, is, I, I looked through all of our, I looked through a lot of our articles today on the municipal codes and I don't really see a definition of if landscape lights are exempt from dark sky compliance because these clearly aren't.
Um, you're talking about that plant and wall wash lighting because the picture there on L two does look like it's directing the light upward, Nick. I think that, that probably generates the question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, it would be good to get a, just can staff help out with that?
Uh, dark sky compliance is gonna mean that you can't have lights directed upward, right?
Looking it up, I'm looking it up right now here.
Good, good.
And, and most of the time when they're dark sky, they actually have to be listed that they are dark sky from the manufacturer. Um, and I looked, I looked the spec sheets on these lights and that they don't have a dark sky compliance listing, which I don't think any landscape lights do. Because that's not the intent. It's, it's for architectural features and, and spotlighting. It's, it's not for general lighting necessity. Um, so that's why I don't have a problem with it. I just don't know if we have, if, if we've stated these details in, in our.
I don't remember which article it is that handles lighting standards, uh, Lucas.
Yes, I have that standard as well in terms of, because I think, uh, Commissioner Swift had referenced, um, foot candles of illumination.
Yeah, that was earlier, just for the general parking lot elimination for safety for, for customers. And I think now we're just kind of on the dark sky issue.
Yeah, so the dark sky, looking at exemptions within there, um, if there are light packages, which I don't believe that this, that's what this is, these are new lights or light fixtures and existing outdoor lighting fixtures um, that were, that are in existence prior to this code, which would have been, um, adopted September twenty eighth of two thousand and thirteen, would be exempt. So lights that are existing prior to that date, um, would have been exempted. Otherwise, they've got to meet the cur-, the current dark sky compliant, um, standards, which talk about shielding those lights down and not up.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, uh, which part of the, the code you're looking at, because I've, I've got the code up here on my other screen. And I did a search for dark sky and no topics came up. So what is this stuff all called?
It's, it's in ten to sixteen point five.
Sixteen point five exterior lighting standards.
Right.
Okay.
The phrase dark sky doesn't actually appear in the code. It's, but it is expressed in, uh, the first section.
Night sky is what they refer to it as.
Yeah.
Sixteen point five, okay.
Yeah.
But this is essentially new development. So, uh, I mean, I would be inclined to, to require dark sky compliant. I mean, it's, it's a new, it's a new development. Why, why shouldn't we go with that?
Yeah, and actually condition ten does, does address that. It says any proposed outdoor lighting shall comply with title ten, chapter two, article sixteen point five, which is the exterior lighting.
Right, okay.
We're talking about here tonight, yeah.
So that, that overrides the pre-existing condition of the twenty thirteen?
Yes.
Or does it? No.
New light.
That's in sixteen five oh five.
Sixteen five oh five is, is the section I was referencing earlier, yes.
Right, so that exemption applies and Commissioner Lottis is saying as a condition of approval that we make sure that all the lighting is dark sky compliant or night sky compliant, whatever the appropriate phrase is. Uh, ten two sixteen point five oh five notwithstanding. Is that correct?
Notwithstanding, yes. Which is the exemption section.
Right.
Do we, do we have any other information on the dark sky as far as the fixtures chosen? Um, it, it vaguely touches about shielding, but doesn't address whether or not the fixture is listed for dark sky. Uh, the sign light spect that hangs up over the, the sign doesn't have a dark sky listing, but just because it's pointed down, it might meet those criteria, but if it got twisted sideways or up, it's no longer dark sky. So I, I just didn't know if it's worth readdressing this later and adding some more definitions and, and clarity to this topic.
Yeah, and I actually, I don't know, I mean, that, that's certainly something we can have, uh, uh, we've been using the, the term deeper dive discussion on, um. The conditions that we have currently in place speak to the dark sky. Right, and I want to call it dark sky, exterior, exterior lighting standards, which is the article sixteen point five. Um, and the, the details that's been provided to the commission identify lights that could very well be turned up. Um, that would then be in direct conflict with this, with this art in terms of what we're talking about here. If that's the case, and that happens after final, let's, let's, so let's just think for a moment here further down the road that this is getting constructed, built, um, permitted, finalized. Um, and then suddenly we're seeing that these lights are turned up and out of compliance with, with our um, exterior lighting standards in sixteen point five. And that becomes a code case. And we address that appropriately, uh, per the, per the, uh, and we get, we get compliance with those, with those requirements and that, that violation. Um, the other option is to, to look at it in a deeper dive format, which is to address it via definitions and clarifying some of that information.
Okay, I think maybe the appropriate thing, uh, Commissioner Lottis might be adding a condition of approval that, that says something like section ten dash two point sixteen point five oh five A notwithstanding all the lighting on this project will be compliant with the dark sky ordinance. I think staff can probably work with that.
Um, yeah, although it does say, seem like we should, um, eliminate the plant and wall wash lighting. That, uh, that should be excluded from the approval somehow, or.
Yeah, we're talking about. They'll be pointed up though. They all have, they're all hingable. So that kind of goes back.
All the lights or, or the plant and wall wash lighting? They can be, they can be tilted down, but then they, they'd show the root ball. So that wouldn't be good. They're supposed to show the architecture of the plant. I think, I, I mean, I don't know. Would, would, would it be bad to eliminate those?
Where, where are those? No, no, I see the picture of them on L two, but where exactly are those plant and wall wash lights?
Oh, located, I don't know.
The, the, the plant and wall washes are on the east side of the driveway. As you, you kind of pull back through the building on the right, you'll see some triangles. So those are up against the right side.
There's three of them.
Yeah. There's not a lot. It's just the concern with landscape lighting is, you know, give it six, eight months and they end up tilting over or falling over and then they end up shining up in the sky anyways because they're just kind of staked into the earth. So, you know, maybe there, maybe there was a little bit more focus or detail on the bases of these, if the, that perma posts were actually embedded in concrete to where if somebody kicked them, they did, you know, fall out of the ground, that might prevent them from staying in their position.
It might be worth asking the, um, and bringing the applicant into this conversation in terms of alternative um, lighting fixtures that don't have that hinging component. You're, you're mentioning two different light fixtures that I'm seeing here as well that fall into that category. Um, the plant and wall wash lighting that we were just talking about. And then, um, I think both of you had mentioned both, both Commissioner Lottis and Commissioner Swift had mentioned the monument sign and water feature lighting as well, which appears to have, have that as well, correct? Are there alternatives? I, I guess I'll ask the applicant, is there an alternative to, to that, um, that could be considered?
Okay, so, um, if you'll notice, I do have, um, a comment under each of the two that you're speaking about because you can actually lock them. But I understand what you're saying. If somebody knocked into it, sure, if somebody knocked into a pathway that was shrouded, it could turn up also. But they are staked in the ground and they are locked and meant to be positioned in position. So the likelihood that they're going to be shining in the wrong place is minimal, but of course, could it happen? Sure. I have used those lights and indicated the locking in some other communities with dark sky ordinances and they were fine. But if you, you know, want, I can search for something else that's more fixed if I can find it. So, um, and as far as the location, I do have it on that, on the east side as you come into the driveway uh, where the bamboo is in general area of the bike parking. So it's just.
Adjacent parcel?
There's a fence actually right there.
Yeah, okay.
It's a fence. So it's kept low, fairly low to the ground. You know, typically more, not more than three feet, just to give kind of a glow light for safety. And the effect, and then they're also used on the interior of the patio which is enclosed with walls. So the walls, they're on the interior. Um, and the monument sign does have a lock as well. But if you want to specify it, I can, I can try to look for something else that gives me the same effect. They do have a shroud on the top. So if you lock it, it's not going to shine up. Of course, if a car hit it and knocked it over, that could happen. I mean, it could shine up. Which would be a client issue, I suppose.
I, I would be satisfied with the condition that says all, all the, all the lighting on the, on the project shall be maintained in such a way that it shines downward shall be maintained. So if something happens to it, you fix it. But shall be maintained such that the lighting is downward directed uh, and compliant with the dark sky ordinance. Um, with municipal code ten two sixteen five oh five A notwithstanding. That will capture all of the older existing lighting.
Right, Jake is correct. I was going to say, not all companies list the landscape lighting as dark sky compliant. There are a couple.
Well, yeah.
Depends on, and unfortunately, you know, so anyway, I just wanted to share that.
Well, I'm, I'm afraid that, that dark sky compliant on the side of a package may be, uh, akin to putting organic on the side of a crate of produce. You're not really sure what it means and the rules are different everywhere.
Yeah.
But we have our own dark sky ordinance, so why not say comply with that?
I liked your wording, Stephen. I, I, I wrote it down.
Okay.
So I, I, um, I, I, I would like to add a condition somewhere, uh, well, I, I guess I don't want to, is that, is that issue was so- somewhat settled?
The lighting?
Yeah.
It kind of sounds, it kind of sounds like it is. I think we found some resolution.
Sounds settled to me, yeah.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of other points, Kathy, when you're done.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, um, I thought that, uh, that the discussion of tree number two having to come out was, was well rationalized. And I would like to see a condition that strongly suggests the owner negotiate with Westridge Market to do the same sort of thing with tree number three. If that's the same kind of tree in the same kind of place and it's going to be uh, convoluted in its future growth because of, one, the trucks that are always, that always seem to be there. I guess it's probably not the same hours that the restaurants open in general, but also because of the need to prune it such that you can use that entrance ramp to the restaurant. I, I would like something that says we strongly suggest that you negotiate with your next door neighbor and, and put the same kind of a tree there if, as Kathy Nolan says, that's the better choice. And Mike Anaba says, that's a better choice than the oak tree that's there. Whether you replace it somewhere else in town, uh, is of less interest to me. We're doing tree for tree. And I would be satisfied with that personally. But I'd like to see if tree number two is a problem, I think tree number three is also a problem. And I'd like to urge the owner to do something about that if it's possible.
So I just want to, I want to point something out. I think Chair Quelsey, I think you're hitting on the right terminology in terms of saying strongly suggesting or strongly recommending. We cannot require improvements and modifications onto a, a separate property. Uh, and I would like to hear the, the applicant weigh in on that suggestion. It sounds like they were agreeable to it, but I'd like to hear them weigh in on, on this. As a potential condition.
Excellent. Well, I've, I've already had conver-, a brief conversation, as I mentioned earlier, with, uh, Dave West. Uh, and we, we have a good rapport. He actually was a past client of mine on the project, so. Uh, I, I think he will, uh, he'll certainly have an opinion. I don't know where he is today, but I'll talk to him again.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think we could have a condition that would say something like replacement of tree number two and number three may occur subject to review by staff in conjunction with the landscape architect. Um, or subject to review by staff in a conjunction with the landscape architect and approval by the, the, what's your title, Lucas?
Community Development Manager.
Something like that. Uh, I mean, I would, because we are losing.
See, that works for me. I like your language.
Um, maybe it needs to be a separate condition, but I would also, I mean, we are losing two live oak trees and, um, and the, by working with Ojai Trees, which is a nonprofit in the city, they do fantastic, um, plantings and most of it is volunteer work. Um, I mean, we could have a separate condition that, that says that they would provide the applicant to replace the, to, to, to offset the value of the lost live oak trees, two of them, that the applicant shall, um, provide the, uh, required donation to Ojai Trees or a similar nonprofit group that, that, um, that can, can find, can replace the like for like, basically. Oh, in, in, in other locations in town. Something like that.
Can't we?
Not talking about a lot of money here, but, but it would address the loss of the live oak trees. I'm sorry, Nick, I think I interrupted you.
Well, I mean, uh, it seems to me fair, fair to ask the client to, uh, to do something about the replacement of the trees, but I think it would, uh, if it's possible, you know, with the, what the operations that are going on with the giant trucks the next door, um, to replace something right there, uh, that's on the other, that's on Dave West's property. Uh, that's one of the trees and then the other tree being the one that, uh, we wanted to remove to, uh, gain view of. To uh gain view of the restaurant operation inside from the street.
Well, I guess I guess we're talking about uh allowing you to replace. The existing trees with something that's more that that benefits the 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 project. And we're also talking about replacing li- live or oak trees, perhaps um preferably the valley oak trees. Uh elsewhere in town through working cooperatively with Ohi Trees and in fact, Ohi Trees with a minimal donation. Of about a hundred dollars, I think it might be a little bit more these days, you could have. Um appropriate replacements of the live oak trees on the site. Tree number two and tree number three and another two hundred dollars. You you would replace the, you would address the loss. And the corresponding value or, you know, to the community of the live oak trees elsewhere in the community. I I mean, for a very minimal amount, yeah.
Kathy Nolan?
I just wanted to be clear on this since I will be handling whatever gets conditioned. The landscape plans, so presently, we have a mitigation um. Or on the title sheet, let me just flip back here. Where do I have it? Oh, there it is, yeah. Um, so there's a replacement tree, so there's the value of the one oak that is existing on the front of the property that is going to come out. Um and then we show what the two replacement trees are on the project. Um so just to be clear, it sounds like um. The tree on Westridge property, the other oak, would be a separate item because it's really not part of this.
Subject to negotiation.
If I understand what you're saying is, we would do our normal. Um replacement tree value, keep that, but in addition. Put out, and I believe unless Ohi Trees change it, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh an additional hundred and fifty dollars to do plant and oak and specifically a valley oak. Somewhere else, it could be on city property or somewhere else, so that would be in addition to this, if I'm understanding.
That's that is, that is definitely, that is. Clearly, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to to be clear.
Kathy Nolan, could you summarize again what the mitigation is for tree number two?
Yeah, so um. It's actually, the replacement cost was two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. So what we've done is we're adding um a forty eight inch box. And a thirty six inch box tree back into the project. To um whi- which will to actually equal more than that, a little bit more, but for two thousand six hundred and fifty. So that's for the tree and the and the labor to to install it.
And that's a tree in front and a tree in back?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'm 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 certainly in favor of of. If it's possible to negotiate such with Mr. West. To do the same sort of replacement of tree number three that you're proposing for tree number two. Um I think it's reasonable to ask that the that the property owner, since the both trees. Have such an impact on the front side of the project, I think it's reasonable to ask. If it can be negotiated, that tree number three be replaced. In with the same kind of tree, if that's a good choice, and Kathy Nolan says it is, so I'll take that. Um I I'd like to see that done. I I I would not be in favor of requiring the property owner to start planting trees elsewhere in town. To make up for it, if if the replacement tree for number two is appropriate. Then I would, I would like to see an attempt at least to do the same sort of thing thing for tree number three. But I I don't know that it's necessary to go plant more oak trees in town. Kathy Nolan?
Yeah, just, I, once again, I want to make sure I understand um. What you're proposing, so um. And of course, this would be separate from this project, but if Mr. West was in agreement to remove the oak on his property. Are you suggesting that uh Mr. Han, the applicant? Oops, I'm not sure, was that my sound, but that he would mitigate. Um based on the value of the other tree, so for another two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, or have it reassessed?
Well, that's, you're putting two trees in place of number two. I think at least one tree, like the one you're putting in where number two is now. Would be a good idea where number three is. But I don't know that it's necessary to go farther than that.
Where uh where is the mitigation plan, Kathy? I'm I'm sorry, I'm just.
L dash zero, which is the the title sheet and has um some of the. Project information, project data, you know, it has the treatment number. Right up, it's about in the middle of the page. L L dash zero, it's the first page.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong page.
I guess my question is um. But how this works if it's not on the applicant's property, but that will be conveyed to us on how to proceed.
I I'd like to see that as a strongly suggest again. That you negotiate a way to replace tree number three with something similar to what you're replacing tree number two with. And I mean with one tree, not with two, I don't know where you'd put another tree on the property.
And just as a as a point here, for these conditions of approval, um. Any of these conditions are all legally uh legally binding on the applicant, and so. If there's an issue in the future, we can address it through code enforcement rather than anticipating every scenario now.
Right.
Yeah.
What are you saying?
I'm saying that, you know, this, as we're going through this, there's, we can also, you know, there's a strongly suggested, but I I would also point out that, you know. That the applicant signs up to these as as part of the conditions of approval, and then we can we can address, I mean. Uh whether they have or have not met the conditions uh once the project is approved, and if they haven't, then they can be subject to code enforcement action and and.
Right, I I think of this summer sort of along the same lines as brush clearance. You can't force someone to clear brush outside their own property.
Right.
And I think we've got the same situation here, I'd just like to suggest that it be done if it's possible.
Right, I mean, I'm not sure, can we can we do a suggestion as a condition of approval? And that, I don't know, I mean, I would I would like to do that, but how would how would we finesse that?
Is that is that possible, Lucas?
It is, I I've seen it done. Does require some work on on my end to to work with the applicant. When you're when you're using words like strongly recommend, it gives me some some work.
Okay.
Some some wording and some work to work with them uh versus. Especially with uh when it's it's potential modifications that are not on the subject site, where we're looking at something that's adjacent. It gets a little bit tricky, not impossible, but it gets a little tricky.
Okay, but however, I still, I still think that um. We are losing um uh two live oak, or well, two live oak, at least one one live oak tree on the property.
And putting two new ones in place of it.
But they're not live oak trees. He's doing, excuse me. Excuse me. The the trees that he's putting on the property are are landscape trees. He's removing a live oak tree and to address that loss. We specifically need a uh a replacement tree somewhere else in town. To offset that loss, and that's what I'm talking about, one, the replacement of one tree. Through working with Ohi Trees, a nonprofit that does plantings throughout town. Um that the applicant pay the hundred and fifty dollars. Which allows Ohi Trees to plant, to find a location and plant a a about Ohi, a valley. About, wait a minute, a valley oak tree, I should know, I've got one in my yard, I should know what it's called.
Valley live oak, I think it was.
No, it's the the other one that's even bigger, it's the that. Anaba was talking about, the valley, valley oak. That the applicant, to address that loss, specifically that loss of the live oak tree on his property, that he pay. Uh and mitigate, that he mitigate that through the hundred and fifty dollar donation fee to oak trees to find. Uh a location appropriate to plant an Ohi Valley tree. That's what I'm, that's, I want, I would like to see another condition for that. I don't know if I have the agreement, but that's what I would propose.
I'm happy to see the mitigation for tree number two, and I would I would hope that we could have something similar for tree number three. But I would, I would not agree to planting additional trees somewhere around town. There is, there is, maybe we should uh see what the other commissioners think, Jake or John?
I think planting trees in other locations couldn't be a bad thing, I mean.
No, it's all, it's all, how much do you want to to uh make the applicant pay?
A hundred and fifty dollars for what the replacement of one live oak tree that's on his property. Um to.
Nolan, is is that hundred and fifty dollars that pay for the tree and the planting?
Yeah, it's a fifteen gallon tree and that includes um. I think that's their flat rate, that's typically kind of a contractor's uh unit price for planting a fifteen gallon tree if you're. Hiring somebody in the trade as well, it could be a little more or less, but typically it's about a hundred and fifty dollars. And that's what Ohi Trees charges.
So so the donation covers the cost of purchasing the tree and then the planting is done completely with volunteer effort. And um, oh, go ahead, Kathy.
I was just gonna also say, Trudy, I mean, we're we're demonstrating that we are going to um mitigate. Based on the value of the tree that's coming out. But I also wanted to say the city of Ohi has a tree fund. And, you know, maybe that's another option. A hundred and fifty dollars could go into the tree fund and or Ohi Trees. Because the treaty, the city of Ohi continues to do uh, you know, planting new trees on public, the public right of way or in the parks. So that's possibly another option, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Um we could, we could, if Lucas can do it, we could have a condition that allows either option. I mean, I would be open, I would be fine with that.
Okay, what do you think, John?
Um I'm supportive of that, um you know, I think when we think about some of the highlights of Ohi. Uh that valley oak is important, I mean, we uh, this valley was originally a an oak tree forest. Um so I think preserving that character as much as we can is is um is great, so I like the idea of replacing that. And whether that be a, you know, a donation to the uh the fund to help with tree mitigation and to help with some of, you know, removing the dead trees and. Putting in new trees, um whatever we can do to help keep our canopy healthy.
Okay, I think I think we need to, we will need eventually to to vote on that as a new condition. I did have one more thing, and rather than strongly suggest, I'd like to make it a condition that. Parking space number eleven be added to those negotiated with the American Legion Hall and moved across the street.
Agree, I agree with that, Steve, that's.
Ten parking spaces in back and five across the street.
Agreed, I I like that, definitely.
I agree with that too.
Um and then to follow up with that, so Lucas, maybe you can do some more writing. Another condition that is specific to the offsite parking where. Uh you know, I think we need to spell out a little bit more about. Uh where those spaces are located, how they will be marked and um and how. Uh how they will be tracked and monitored.
I think I think it's, I think it's part and parcel of a shared parking arrangement. That the spaces are not marked because they're not always used for the same people, they're shared spaces.
Well, okay, okay, so have we, okay.
And I'm familiar with the area, there must be fifty excess spaces.
There's a ton of spaces over there.
Yeah.
Is there lighting in that parking lot for night?
Um minimal, if any.
There, I mean, there is some, there is some lighting there, uh I I agree with with that condition, I I I don't know that you necessarily want to put. Uh a limitation or a location of those spaces, you're allowing those spaces to be kind of free flow. It gives some some latitude to the applicant as well in negotiating with the um with that area.
Okay, I mean, I just don't know if we have done any other offsite parking um in the city, I mean.
Offsite, uh but this same Hakani Hakani sushi restaurant. Uh came before the commission, I don't know, two or three years ago. And established a shared parking arrangement in their current location. With another tenant in the area that I think was a veterinarian or something.
Okay.
And I don't think that any of the parking spaces were marked, there was just an agreement between the two private parties that they would share that.
Yeah. Okay, so I would just um ask staff to make sure that there's some kind of a formalized system of. Of uh tracking offsite parking arrangements so that so that.
How would you, you you want to send city staff out in the evenings?
No, 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 it, no, as a file, a file management uh issue in in-house, so that.
Actually is an agreement between the two private parties.
The city, so it's easy for the city staff to know where are the offsite parking, where are that, where, which, what are the parking. Array, offsite parking arrangements, where are they located and so.
I I think that may be already one of the conditions of approval that that there be and a shared parking arrangement. I would just like to make sure that it's for five spaces, not for four. And that that space number eleven that's currently blocked by a steel post be left as it is to not disturb that tree anymore.
But Lucas, could you check on what uh what the arrangement is for uh in terms of. City records about how offsite parking arrangements are managed.
Documentation or Excel sheet or something.
Make sure that there's that shared parking arrangement in writing, yeah.
And just just for for clarification purposes, I had a conversation with the proprietor to the south. Um early on, I want to say back in either April or May, uh right before. The uh there was consideration of of this being a shared parking arrangement. And they shared with me that they actually have uh an existing um shared parking arrangement with the exotic tie next door. Maybe that tie seems to always use parking uh within that area and and they needed to pay to play. So that that I was I was aware of, and once I knew that and started kind of looking at the the numbers, realizing that there was excess parking. It seemed like a logical solution for them, um but I wasn't a part of that negotiation.
No, I I think uh I think where there's opportunity to do offsite parking, where there's spaces that are there, they're not utilized, uh why not?
Yes. I'll bet, I'll bet during Ohi Day, that American Legion parking lot is well used. By people that don't have a shared parking arrangement.
True.
It's just taken as public parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other, any other discussion? I think we have two or three points that we need to to settle on as a commission. In terms of conditions of approval. Perhaps the easiest one is to deal with this parking. Can we make it a condition of approval, there are four of us voting. That that the shared parking arrangement with the American Legion be for five spaces, not four. And parking space marked number eleven not be used as such.
To be clear, that sounds like two. To be clear, that sounds like two separate conditions, not one condition, correct?
Yeah, it does.
I guess, I guess, yeah, Nikhil, that's two conditions?
Yeah, so I split it up. So.
What's, what's the feeling, Jack? Or I'm sorry, Jake and, and John?
Yeah, I like that.
I like it too. I'll support that.
I'll support that.
Second, second point was the suggestion at least that the property owner try to get an agreement with Mr. West of Westridge Market to replace tree number three in, in a similar fashion to the way tree number two is being replaced. Although I'm not sure we need a second tree, the way you're putting a second tree in the back to mitigate the loss of tree number two. Everybody liked that idea, just, just that piece of it.
Well, that condition would be negotiating with the property adjacent for net, for tree number three. So tree number two should be a separate condition, right?
That's, tree number two, I think, is already in the plan. So if we just say, go with the plan, I think tree number two is, is covered.
Okay.
I would, I would like to see tree number three replaced, if it can be negotiated with the neighbor, with something like they're replacing tree number two. That is the single tree there in front. Cause I see it's a problem just the, the severe trimming you'd have to do just to make it
Yeah.
possible to get to the front of the restaurant. And I'm not sure that that's going to be a good thing either. And then I'd like to take up separately the idea of planting trees elsewhere in town. Because Nikhil, I think that again would be a separate condition.
That's a separate condition.
Okay. So let's just look at the strong suggestion that, that tree number three be replaced if it can be negotiated with the neighbor. Is that an appropriate condition, Nikhil?
Yeah, I mean, Lucas will have to finesse the, the details there, but yes.
Okay, okay, great.
Does that, does that work for everybody?
Yeah. Yeah, the condition is, is basically just try to work through a negotiation if you can.
Try to work through it and, and, and put something there that's more the right tree in the right place. As Kathy said before. Then the third thing that I know of that, that we, we should discuss is whether or not to, to require that the owner either contribute to the tree fund or to Ojai Trees for the replacement of one or two oak trees on or near the property, on or impinging on the property, let's say. Either by a donation to the tree fund or by a donation to Ojai Trees. Does that summarize it appropriately, Kathy Lottis?
Yes.
Okay. And how do you, how do you feel? I know Kathy's in favor. She suggested it. Jake and John, how do you feel about that?
Oh, I'm in favor of that. I think that's a good idea.
I agree. Yep.
You agree? Okay, well then, by, by a three to one consensus, we're asking that.
And.
Yes, sir.
One quick point on that one. The, just so we're clear, the we can't require a payment to a non-city entity. An Ojai tree.
Then just to the tree fund.
Yes, they can pay a mitigation fee to the city tree fund, but we can't pay one, we can't require a payment to a non-city entity.
But can they, can they have their choice?
Um, I, I'm hesitant at that point because we're, I mean, we're not.
I, I agree. We're starting to pick winners and losers if we require one priority, private.
I, I would, I, it's not legal to require them to give the option to Ojai Tree.
Okay.
Yeah. A, a, a payment of a mitigation fee to the city tree fund is legal. Um, yeah.
And, and for one or two trees, depending on the outcome of negotiations with the neighbor.
Okay.
And the last, I guess the last thing that we talked about was this plant and wall wash lighting. And, and again, Lucas, I'm not sure of the correct wording, but I'd like to see something that says all the lighting on the property, ten-two sixteen point five oh five A notwithstanding, shall be maintained to be compliant with the dark sky ordinance. So, you know, if, if something gets damaged, then you fix it, but you make sure that all the lights are directed downward.
For that one, I feel like it's just an extension to, to condition number ten. To, which condition number ten talks about Article sixteen point five, which is the exterior lighting standards. So you're just building up on that to provide additional clarification.
Right. I think, I think Steve had put, said, the language I wrote down that he said was adding on to that sentence and shall be maintained such that lighting is downward directed and compliant with Article sixteen point five, with the operative word is maintained, shall be.
Ten-two sixteen point five oh five A notwithstanding. Does there have to be some lighting there that predates this twenty thirteen ordinance?
Oh.
Now, Mr. O'Way has already said they were going to do that, they're make sure that everything is downward directed. But I just want to make sure that all the lighting on the property is so configured.
Agreed.
And rather than adding a new condition, you could revise the existing condition to say.
Revised condition ten, ten, to that end, yes.
Can I add one little note? In ten dash two point sixteen five oh three applicability, says all outdoor light fixtures maintained upon private property, public property, or public right-of-way installed, modified, or replaced, requiring a building or planning permit after the effective date of the ordinance. And this article shall be fully shielded. In addition, light pollution shall be reduced to the maximum level feasible through the use of directional lighting, fixture location and height, as well as motion sensors and timers to control non-essential lighting. So are we going to require these lights to be on motion sensors as well?
Lucas, could I add that the building department always requires that before final? They check all the light fixtures for, for all those items.
Okay.
And, and just to, just to piggyback on to that, and, and thank you, Sherry, for that clarification. That's true. This, this condition that we're talking about here, that we're beefing up here to provide the clarification, I think it, Commissioner Swift, I think it hits on what you're talking about. When we, when we're talking about compliance with this entire article, it's the entire article.
Right.
Calling out specific sections gets a little bit nitpicky in terms of how we're addressing things.
And, and to be fair, all projects in the city are, 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 are expected to adhere to the municipal code. And, and unless there's a specific exemption here. And so this condition imposes the entirety of that article, as Lucas said, on them. So, yeah.
Well, except that, we're talking about what takes precedence, ten-two sixteen five oh three A or ten-two sixteen five oh five A? Is there something about the order in which they appear in the code that implies some precedence? Or do exemptions always take precedence over general regulations? Or is there some other protocol?
I don't know if A applies because these lights aren't existing yet.
Yeah, we're talking about new, yeah, you're right.
The new, only the regulations relating to new lights would apply.
Excuse me?
Only, only the, these aren't, these aren't, these are new lights.
Well, not all of them are. I think Nick said there was already lighting all around the parking lot.
Well, there's, there's the ballard.
Did I misunderstand?
Yeah.
There's a lot of new, there's, all the landscape lighting is all new. That's what's in question.
All, all I wanted to make sure was that if, if we're having a new project, that we make the lights dark sky compliant and maintained such that they are. And I don't know, I, I didn't look that closely at light fixtures around the parking lot when I walked around it. So. I've.
I don't, I don't.
You said there's lighting there already and that it's downward directed?
Yes.
Okay. And any, anything like the plant wash and wall wash stuff that you put in should be compliant, but that would come under sixteen, ten-six, ten-two sixteen five oh three, I guess. Because it's new. It's not part of the exemption in five oh five. So we don't need to specify it?
I would say it's covered by that, by that condition ten that we're speaking about.
By five oh five A?
Yes.
It's, it's not part of five oh five A with an exemption. Okay.
But it was a good question.
So it sounds like maybe we don't need to do anything about the lighting because five oh three A covers it? Except if the existing lighting is older than twenty thirteen, then it could conceivably fall under five oh five A. Now, if it's already downward directed and dark sky compliant, we don't need to require anything more. But I don't know.
I think that's it. Question to you, Lucas.
Oh, is that a question for, I thought I was.
I don't know. I, I don't know what we need to do here, if anything.
Here, okay, so let me just break this down for, for the, for the commission. What we're looking at here is conditions of approval. Condition number ten speaks to the exterior, exterior light, lighting standards that we're talking about here. I think Commissioner Swift brought up a good point in terms of five oh three A, which speaks to new, the new lighting, meeting the standards, and any existing lighting remaining as is. Isn't that correct? Isn't that the way that I was reading it? I think that's the way we're all reading.
Five oh three A is all the new stuff after twenty thirteen. Five oh five A talks about the older stuff.
Yeah, so the new stuff that we're looking at here, there's questions and concerns regarding it. We're looking at alternatives to, to that lighting as well.
Five oh three A covers it, right.
Yeah, right. So it almost feels as if that's being addressed already per that condition and the discussion that we've had. Now, question I have is, do we add a condition that identifies revisions to that, to those two lighting packages that we were looking at, in terms of how that light splashes against the wall as alternatives, and make that a condition?
Well, if it's, if it's downward directed, as it would have to be under five oh three A, then I don't think it's a problem. I'm only concerned about the older lighting that might be around the parking lot.
Right, so that older lighting is, is within the confines of that, of our code currently. If we're looking at going outside of that, then yes, we would need to have some sort of a condition that the applicant would have to agree with.
I don't think we need to add conditions that are outside the code. I'm just concerned about the applicability of five oh five A, the exemption for older lighting. So, John, Jake, Kathy, what do you think?
Well, um, I guess, I mean, I sounds like we're pretty well-covered, but we, we could ask that alternatives be looked at, that staff in conjunction with the landscape architect, look at, look at alternatives that would not include a hinged light fixture or something that.
I don't personally have a problem with a hinged light fixture, as long as it's hinged so that the light is directed down. If it got damaged or it aged out.
You could run over a, a non-hinged fixture, fixture as well as you could hinge, maybe. I don't know. I'm, I'm a little out of my league on this one.
Uh, well.
We're, we're coming unhinged.
If it becomes unhinged, right. So Lucas, what do you think? Do we need something there?
I think, I think the only challenge that I have is, is code, from a code enforcement standpoint, if we're dealing with something down the road and it becomes unhinged, I think Commissioner Swift brought a good point that, or actually, I think it was, I don't recall who made, who made the point about, about nudging it with a vehicle. And suddenly you've got a, I mean, we're talking about different types of scenarios, hypothetical scenarios. These are real possibilities given their location.
Well, since those.
We want to take a comment from.
Lights are new, so they have to comply with five oh three A. And if one of them is damaged or otherwise becomes non-compliant, it's a code enforcement thing.
Do you want to have the landscape architect just say?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy Nolan, please.
Okay, the comment that I wanted to make is that, yes, they are hinged, but they have a lock on it. So if you look at my note, for instance, the wall wash, the beam with the three feet, it would be fit to not go over three feet in height, so or less. But it did, they both have a lock on them. A lot of different manufacturers have the hinge lights that don't have the lock on them. So, or if you want me to find something else, I will, but I just wanted to point that out in case.
Yeah. I think it's the effect we're looking for, not the implementation details, just the effect.
Yeah, well, the lock keeps it in place so that the light doesn't move around. Of course, if somebody came in and even knocked a ballard over or a pathlight that was shrouded, you know, if it was knocked over, the light could go up.
Sure.
And I'm saying the same thing for that if it's locked in.
And code enforcement would say, go fix that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to point out that the lock keeps it directed to where exactly you want it.
Okay.
But.
So it sounds like maybe we don't need to do anything because they're new lights, they have to be compliant. Is that okay with everybody?
I mean.
Right. Do we have any other issues to discuss with regard to this case before we vote on it? All right, well, I'll entertain a motion for, or for approval of this, of the DRP, the CUP, and the conditions of approval as amended, and see where we go. Someone want to make a motion in a second?
Um, so I'll move approval of design review permit nineteen dash zero zero nine and conditional use permit CUP nineteen dash zero zero seven to include the conditions of approval as proposed by staff and as modified by the commission tonight with regard to the, uh, wait a minute, the off-site parking agreement, the number tree, tree negotiation with the adjacent owner, tree number two, replacement of tree number three.
Number three is the negotiation with.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Just reverse that and payment of a mitigation fee of a hundred and fifty dollars per tree to the city tree fund for removal of.
One or two.
Live oak trees.
Removal of one or two trees.
One or two live oak trees.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, Sherry, can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Colossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Swift?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Four zero. Thank you, Nick and Kathy Nolan and Mike and Abba. Thank you for this extensive use of your time this evening. For this extensive use of your time this evening. Um.
Uh, thanks to the applicant for being patient with a nitpicky discussion. I'm, I thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Now, Lucas, do we, do we really, it's, um, almost ten o'clock. Do we really want to go on to item six or should we hold that to the next meeting?
Uh, can we, I think we can continue this date specific and, and hold this at the next. Meeting, which would be.
Be the twenty first of October. Yeah.
But I would need a motion from, from the commission in order to do that. So that we, we don't have to renotice.
Right, to continue that.
I'm sorry, Nikhil?
We, we need a motion just to continue that to the next meeting.
To, to a date certain, right, okay. And we, could we have a motion to that effect? I think. We've probably tired ourselves out this evening. Um.
I could put my.
Motion to continue item number six to October twenty first?
And before we, before we take that motion, before we take that motion, I want to make sure that we're recognizing that Commissioner Price-Terry Nolan is back. On the.
Oh, very good, yes.
And no longer acting.
Yes.
You're legal again.
Yes, I switched hats. Even though you can't see it.
So, um, so moved.
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
You've been very patient with us as, as we have been with each other. And I think we've got a good solution here. Okay, we have a motion to continue item number six to a date certain October twenty first. Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Nolan seconds it. Any discussion? Sherri, could we have a vote, please?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Swift?
Yes.
Very good, okay. Uh. Next on the agenda. Item number seven, director decisions. Um, anybody have any questions there? I have just one for Lucas. Not seeing any other questions. I'd like to ask Lucas, the tree permit. Um, I, I looked into the code and I see that, uh. Title four. Section eleven point thirteen says you need a tree permit to remove a tree. Four dash eleven point zero four A talks about pruning something greater than four inches in diameter. Is that the case here? Because they're asking about tree pruning.
Right, because you're, and I think the other, the other case is, and I think it's something we've talked about, is. Staying within the twenty-five percent. Canopy, um, restriction as well. Because if you're going over that, then it, it triggers. Uh, not only a tree permit, but then also, um, planning commission reviewing consideration. Uh, we had a tree permit that actually came before this commission several months ago, uh, because.
Remember the inn had one.
Hmm, I don't know that I was here.
They were doing some tree stuff around that new supply building or whatever it was.
Yeah, I was thinking about, there was a church, I think it was off of, of Grand.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Having.
Yes, the, the Valley Oaks.
Kind of, uh, Kathy's neighborhood, right?
Yeah, and there were some of them that they, they realized that they needed to trim more. Here, we're looking at an annual tree pruning. That, that apparently takes place every year. Within the parameters that can be handled at staff level, but triggers a tree, a tree permit for the pruning.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go on to, uh, future agenda. And we have on the twenty first, we already have title ten errata and other revisions. We can take up what we would have otherwise taken up tonight. Is there anything else that you see coming at our next meeting, Lucas?
Nothing at the moment.
Okay. And finally, words of wisdom from our city council liaison, Mr. Haney.
You gotta pinch me to wake myself up here, guys. I thought.
That when I watched the city council meetings.
I thought we had long meetings. You know, I had a, a number of things to say, but I wrote them down and then you guys gave me time to clean my office. So I threw them away. Um, the only thing that I would say, um, first of all, thank you for your time and thank you for the. For deliberating the way you do and, and the fact that you're willing to spend the time to. You know, really think through and, and process. Um. You know, the applications and, and, and listen to the applicants and. And, um, come up with some sound reasoning and sound decision. So it's important. Even if it takes four hours, it's just important. Um, you know, regarding the, uh, the general plan update. Um, I, that's where I had most of my notes and, and I just want us to be, um, careful. As we advocate for things that we want. That we recognize that there's seventy-six hundred of us. And that the most important thing that we do is we try to reach some form of alignment on the thought process of the general plan. And not necessarily worry about achieving a consensus and getting my own, my own wish done. So, um. I just think it's important that we recognize that and also as officials. Um. With a high standing in the community as planning commissioners, you carry a lot of weight. Um, just as we do as council people, so it's. It's just important that, that, um, we listen more than we talk. And that we, um, keep a lot of our comments to ourselves because you'll be weighing in as a body. Um, that's why tonight you didn't see me weigh in at all. Um, I never know if it's going to come back to me in any form of an appeal, so. I shouldn't subject myself to giving anyone my opinion during these hearings, um.
Best not make up your mind before the meeting, right?
That's right. It's in, and so it's important that, that you folks do the same thing. The other thing that I know I'm going to do. And I suggest that you do. Is actually read the past. Um.
General plan?
I think we have nine elements because we have a recreation element. But, uh, um, I suggest you read them and actually look at what they say and, and what they're trying to achieve. Uh, because, because you folks are going to have a lot of input and a lot of say when it comes back. And how that it's processed through you and then given to council. So it's just important that I think you, you, you really understand the scope. Um. And the process. Now, I've never been one, so you're hearing someone who's making a recommendation to you that, um, I'm making to myself. Uh, when I coached high school football, our head coach drummed this into me from day one. And it's the three Ls, look, listen, and learn. And, uh, if we apply that to ourselves as we deliberate and as we in, integrate ourselves with the community and guide them. Um, I think that, I think what, what this body does and what the council body does. Um, and, and, and staff, I think in the end, we're going to come up with a great general plan. Um. The, the last thing I would say is. More meetings publicly. And more communications and involvement with the community. And, and I'll use the ATP as a, for instance. Um, they've said that we've had twenty-one to twenty-five meetings. Yet. You can walk down the street and ask anybody, what's ATP? And you know what? Most people don't know what it is. And then when they hear about it, what they're hearing is they're not necessarily getting the truth, they're getting perceptions. And that's difficult to overcome because once someone has a perception, um, they're pretty much locked in. So, um, so that's what I'm saying, in the general plan, it's best that we engage. Um, and look, listen, and learn. And study ourselves and be prepared to deliberate and to actually involve ourselves. So, um, that's all I have. I, I think you guys did a wonderful job tonight. I, I, uh, John Trent, um, nice to see you on board. Jake. Always nice to see you. Um, two new bodies, two fresh faces. Um, you're going to bring a lot to the, to the discussion. You already did tonight, just, just looking at your thoughtfulness, so, uh, welcome. And, uh, we'll see you at the next four hour session.
Thank you.
I'll say.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you, Randy. And there being no obvious other business before the commission. At ten oh two, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. For your time, for your diligence, for your willingness to engage in so many ways tonight. And thank you, Kathy Nolan in particular, for stepping back. And just providing us with data so that we could make an informed decision. Thank you all.
You.
Night.
Good night.
Thank you, bye.